Welcome to the Norwood School Committee meeting of Wednesday, April 9. We are coming to you this evening from our home base in the Savage Center. We have four of our members in attendance this evening. Dr. Joan Giblin will be coming to us a little bit later. I'm going to ask everybody who is in attendance to please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I did say we were all, four of us were in attendance, but I did want to take a moment to welcome our newest committee member, Ms. Judith Bromley, has joining us this evening for the first time, elected on Monday. Congratulations. Very fast turnaround for us in the school committee world. So diving right in, two days later to your first meeting, so thank you so much for joining us. Okay, so first order of business is going to be approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes in our packet. We have the executive session minutes and the open session minutes from the March 26th meeting. Are there any questions, discussion on those minutes?
Question to approve?
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Seconded by David. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstain? So that'll be three, four, three, four, zero opposed and one abstention. So the next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Left, do we have correspondence this evening?
Madam Chair, we have a joint letter from Representative John Rogers and Senator Mike Rush, and I'll read that to the committee now. Dear members of the Norwood School Committee, thank you for your letter and your continued dedication to advocating for Norwood students and educators. We appreciate the opportunity to have met with you and discuss the challenges facing Norwood Public Schools. Your concerns regarding school funding, special education costs, Medicaid reimbursements, and mental health resources are critical, and we remain committed to working collaboratively with you at addressing them. We recognize the urgent need to review and update the Chapter 70 funding formula to ensure that it keeps pace with the rising costs and fully supports the Student Opportunity Act. Representative Rogers was the primary author of legislation to remove the cap on inflation in the Chapter 70 formula, a key step toward ensuring schools like Norwood receive the resources they need. We will continue to advocate for the proposed $1,103,545 increase in Chapter 70 funding for Norwood in the upcoming budget process. We also support enhancing the special education circuit breaker by increasing the reimbursement rate from 75 to 90 percent and lowering the threshold from four times to three times the average per people cost. Representative Rogers led the creation of the Circuit Breaker Program and later authored legislation to include special education transportation costs within its reimbursement structure, both critical steps in alleviating the financial burden on school districts. With out-of-district placements and transportation costs on the rise, we remain committed to securing the necessary funding to support school districts in meeting these challenges. Additionally, we believe that allowing districts to expand special education reserve funds from 2% to 5% of net school spending would provide much-needed long-term financial flexibility and allow districts to set aside funds for unexpected expenses without requiring additional state resources. Furthermore, we support efforts to ensure school districts retain Medicaid reimbursements for special education, nursing, and counseling services provided by staff, by school staff. These funds should remain within schools to directly benefit students and the programs that serve them. Finally, we agree that investing in mental health resources for students, staff, and families must remain a top priority. Recent changes to Chapter 71, Section 37, Agent Three Quarters have placed added financial burdens on schools, spurring the need to secure funding to provide restorative justice programs, mental health services, and alternative disciplinary practices to meet the requirements of the law. We appreciate the important work you do on behalf of Norwood students, and we will continue to advocate for policies that provide schools with the resources they need. Please do not hesitate to reach out if you would like to discuss these issues further. Sincerely, John Rogers and Mike Rush. Madam Chair, I know there was another legislative letter today, too. I don't know if that wants to be read now as part of this, or you want to just wait until later on today?
If you want to read it, Mr. Left.
Yep.
Just because they're together, yep.
That's fine.
So this is an email, letter reply from Senator Markey to Ms. Stewart on behalf of the letter that they wrote to him as well. And this says, from Edward Markey, Dear Teresa, thank you for contacting me about Medicaid. I appreciate hearing your thoughts on this important, nearly 80 million, I'm sorry, this important issue. Nearly 80 million Americans rely on Medicaid, making it the largest public health insurance program in the United States. Medicaid provides essential health coverage for millions of Americans, including seniors, people with disabilities, and low-income families. More than a third of children in the U.S. rely on Medicaid for health care coverage. In February 2025, Donald Trump said Elon Musk and DOGE to make cuts to Medicare and Medicaid. At the same time, House Republicans authored a budget resolution that would cut funding for Medicaid by $880 billion over the next 10 years. If passed, these cuts would worsen health care, access for Americans to rely on Medicaid. They would also devastate the home care and health care workforce. President Trump endorsed the House-proposed Medicaid cuts. Any cuts to Medicaid are unacceptable and will hurt people in Massachusetts and across the country. On February 12, I led a letter, I led a letter to President Trump demanding that the Trump Administration, Elon Musk, and the Department of Government Efficiency, DOGE, make no cuts to Medicare and Medicaid to pay for tax cuts for billionaires. There's a letter attached here. We should be making health care easier to get, not harder. Please know that I will continue to fight for a health care system that provides high-quality, affordable care for all. Thank you again for contacting me about this issue. If my office can be of further assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out again. Sincerely, Edward Markey, United States Senator. Obviously, these were in response to the letters from you and requesting that there be, there would be consideration to not reduce Medicaid funding, which impacts our mass health funding that we get from the state, which impacts how we can provide services to students in schools, medically related services in schools like OT, PT, behavioral speech, also in response to our worry about any federal cuts that could come our way and impact Title I, IDEA, and so on, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you. If I move on, any comments, questions, discussion about the letters? It's not typical during the correspondence, but this is in response again to the legislative advocacy led by Ms. Stewart and Ms. Smith in the room with us, so thank you for that. All right, all right, we'll move on to the next agenda item is the warrant report. So this week, I signed warrants in the amounts of $2,035,414.70, $2,031,076.48, $16,805.12, $89,189.2, $283,853.29, $70,538.85, $44,162.67, $13,142.70, $873,527.79, and $14,320.80 for a grand total of $5,472,031.42. Are there any questions on the warrant report this evening? Great. All right, so we will move right into our next item is public comment. Reminder to the public, you can access public comment in several ways. You can call the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting in order to get a hybrid link, a link to our hybrid meeting. You can also sign up to put your name on our in-person list. You can also come to our meeting in the Savage Center and sign in in person. Is anyone, has anyone pre-signed up for public comment this evening, Mr. Left?
They have not, Madam Chair.
Is anyone in attendance here for public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none at 7:16, I will declare public comment closed. Okay, so we'll move into our next agenda item. So quickly, we're going to pull up something from the superintendent's report so that we can get some people in the audience a little reprieve and not have to wait through some longer presentations.
Margo, you ready to go?
Yeah.
Just kidding. I've been interacting since eight o'clock. Actually, I have the pleasure tonight to provide two awards to students of ours, one from the National School Development Council and the New England School Development Council, and one from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. The first one that I will do tonight is from the New England School Development Council. This is an award for academic growth and student leadership and learning. The NSDC award is presented to high school seniors who, in your opinion, have consistently pursued a high level of academic effort and who have also served a positive role model, as positive role models for the student body. Recipients of the award exemplify admirable character and accomplishment. I am pleased tonight to present this award to Julia Pereira.
Pereira.
Pereira, thank you, who is an exceptional student and person who has achieved at a remarkably high level, both in and out of the classroom. She is a natural leader who possesses a quiet confidence and an exceptional work ethic. Julia ranks among the top of her class academically while taking out our most rigorous course curriculum. As successful as Julia has been in the classroom, it's her far-reaching impact on others that is most impressive. She has already created a life built on serving others and giving back to her community. Julia founded a club called Women Empowerment Youth Organization where students educate and advocate for women's rights and advancement. In addition, she is the president of our Global Citizens Program, Global Citizenship Program, a group that works to increase student awareness about global needs and its impact. She is currently building a community greenhouse in Norwood that will grow fruits, vegetables, and herbs that will be donated to local food pantries for people in need. It is impossible to list all of her accolades and community service projects for which she has been a huge part of over the last four-plus years. Julia is a remarkable young woman who doesn't just want the world to be a better place. She works to make that change happen. We are so proud to have her as a representative of Norwood High School and our Norwood community. That from the high school administration and guidance. Again, Julia, congratulations. I'll actually come to you.
This is an award to you. Congratulations.
The next award that I'm going to present is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Certificate of Academic Excellence. As the educational leader in each community, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has designed an award for academic excellence. These awards are given to high school students who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school career. The criteria are a three-year cumulative average, rank in class, personal selection by the superintendent, and the superintendent has leeway among the top 5% for his personal selection. So this particular student tonight is Timothy Guarn. Congratulations, Timothy. I have a letter here from Christine Lynch, school counselor, that allowed me to kind of work through this decision. She writes, "It is a true privilege to recommend Tim Guarn, one of the brightest and most exceptional students I have had the pleasure of working with in my 16 years as a school counselor. He consistently demonstrates a level of drive, hard work, and thoughtfulness that sets him apart from his peers. Tim's innovative thinking, combined with a kind and humble nature, makes him not only a standout student, but also a role model within our community. He approaches every challenge with determination and grace, always seeking to improve himself while uplifting those around him." And here are some of the many accomplishments below. He was ranked two in the competitive graduating class of 241 students. He's a member of the esteemed National Honor Society. He was a Harvard Book Award recipient, a National Merit Scholarship was received for outstanding performance on PSAT. He had the AP Capstone Designation, and I'll pronounce this wrong, but the Rensselaar Math Medal in 2024, Rensselaar Science Medal in 2024, and enrolled in 14 advanced placement courses throughout his tenure. He also had some extracurricular activities, he's been busy, Boy Scouts, earning the Eagle Scout rank in December of 2022, employed at Big Y Supermarket as a service clerk since 2023, a member of our debate team, a four-year member and vice president of the French Club, a unified basketball team mentor, participated in the math club, and a volunteer at Moosehill Sanctuary. Of note, and in addition to his academic achievements, Tim is highly involved in our community, demonstrating a deep commitment to service and leadership. His remarkable accomplishment of earning the prestigious honor of Eagle Scout speaks to his dedication and character. Tim is someone who leads by example, not only through his actions, but through his humility and willingness to serve others. I am confident that his qualities will continue to bring him success in all of his future endeavors, and I highly recommend him for an opportunity that aligns with his talents and aspirations. Christine Lynch." Congratulations, Tim, on your award.
I just wanted to take a moment to say congratulations to Tim and Julia. Very, very honored to have students such as yourselves in Norwood Public Schools do us very proud and continue to do us proud as you move on to your next endeavors. Anybody else?
Congratulations.
I didn't want to hog it all in case anybody else wanted to say anything.
Congratulations.
Did you want to do a picture?
I do.
Or did you want to hang out?
Do you want a picture?
Let's pause a moment here.
I think that would be great.
Yeah. We just don't want to make them have to hang out for the entire, everything.
That's okay.
Yeah. Oh, I would have, sorry. I'm like, here, what a picture, and then I don't actually get up to take a picture.
This is great. Yes.
Oh, no, we need that.
Thank you.
One, two, and three. One, two, and...
We don't mind this part.
One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, so we're going to continue on with our recognition of Norwood students with an appearance by Mr. John Longley here to give us our winter sports recognitions.
Okay, great, thank you for having me. We had a really successful winter season. A lot of the student athletes and coaches were recognized at our end-of-the-season awards night in March, but I'm glad to be with you here tonight. I have a list of winter TVL Tri-Valley League awards and also our NHS awards that were presented that evening. We also had some team awards that I'll discuss at the end, but I'll just go through the individual awards and recognize those student athletes. So first up was boys' basketball, our winter TVL awards for boys' basketball. TVL Large MVP was Alex Yukimcheck and TVL All-Star Brian Dearborn, NHS awards for boys' basketball. Co-MVP Brian Dearborn, Co-MVP Alex Yukimcheck. Unsung hero for boys' basketball was Sam Larky. For girls' basketball, TVL awards, TVL All-Star was Ava Morad and TVL All-Star Ellen Baranowski. And head coach Kristen McDonald was TVL Large Coach of the Year. Girls' basketball, winter NHS awards, Team MVP Ava Morad. Coaches Award Ava O'Neil, and unsung hero was Lily Cordani. Winter cheerleading, TVL awards, All-Star Isabella Allen and Gabriella Josef. Winter cheer awards for NHS was Coaches Award Gracie Goico, Coaches Award Deja Newton, and Most Improved Analia Harnett. Gymnastics, NHS awards, MVP Megan Wafer. Coaches Award Kalen Hamway, and Most Spirit was Olivia Loud. Boys' ice hockey, TVL awards were All-Star TJ Martin and All-Star Antipikin Svia Tazlov. And winter NHS awards for boys' ice hockey were Coaches Award TJ Martin, Coaches Award Jacob Sheehan, and Coaches Award Ryan Valeri. Girls' ice hockey, TVL awards, TVL All-Star Emily Spadorsha and TVL All-Star Isla Wilson. Girls' ice hockey NHS awards were Coaches Award Ava Hines, Coaches Award Molly Roach, and Coaches Award Emily Spadorsha. Boys' indoor track and field, TVL awards, TVL All-Star Mike DeJour and TVL All-Star Corey O'Brien. Winter NHS awards for boys' indoor track and field, Team MVP Corey O'Brien, Coaches Award Mike DeJour, and Coaches Award Ryan Murray. Girls' indoor track, TVL awards, TVL All-Star Natalie Martin. NHS awards for girls' indoor track, Team MVP Natalie Martin, Coaches Award Karen Gorman, and Most Improved was Sylvia Caparata. Boys' swim and dive, TVL awards, All-Star Caleb Kwan, and NHS award was breakout swimmer Caleb Kwan. Girls' swim and dive, TVL awards were TVL All-Star Samantha Lee, TVL All-Star Colleen Sisk, TVL All-Star Bridget Sople. NHS awards for girls' swim and dive were Co-MVP Colleen Sisk, Co-MVP Bridget Sople, and Rookie of the Year was Samantha Lee. The girls' swim and dive were also recognized by the TVL for Team Sportsmanship Award. Wrestling, TVL awards were All-Star Ahmed Alafi, All-Star Drew Bartuka, and All-Star James Patello. Wrestling NHS awards were MVP Ahmed Alafi, Unsung Hero Jay Merritt, and Most Improved was James Patello. So those were some of the individual awards for the winter season. As far as team awards, we had three teams win the TVL Large Championship. Boys' ice hockey won the TVL Large Championship, and they were coached by head coach Chuck Allen. Boys' basketball also won the TVL Large Championship, and they're coached by Christopher Oli. And girls' basketball won the TVL Large Championship, and they're coached by Kristen McDonald. As I mentioned, the girls' swim team was recognized by the TVL for Team Sportsmanship Award. And all of our teams either qualified for the team MIA tournament play or individually, the individual teams, all of our participants participate in all the MIA tournaments throughout the whole winter season. So it was a great winter, very exciting, you know, congratulations to all of our student athletes and our coaches, and thank you to all the parents and families and community members that supported our student athletes throughout the, throughout the season. And I always say this at the onset, but thank you to the support staff, the winter in particular, because we have, there's a lot happening at night and moving parts and weekends, so we have, you know, a great support staff that support the student athletes and the coaches to, to help create a safe environment and positive outcomes for everybody, so thank you.
If you have any comments, sir? Great job, John. I think I saw in the fall, we have three senior athletes committed to D1 next year. Correct?
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did a commitment ceremony in the fall, so we have, you know, we had three, we had three athletes that were committed to Shay Larky committed to Colgate for, I'm sorry, Cornell for field hockey. Natalie Martin committed to Holy Cross for Cross Country, and Colleen Sisk committed to Bryant for diving. So that was during the fall season, we recognized those student athletes for their signings and commitment ceremony, so congratulations to them again.
Wonderful.
Congratulations to all our athletes. Great, thank you.
Thank you. All righty. So now we move on to non-student celebratory, but no less important. So our next appearance, our, some representatives from Vertex are going to give us an update on the Kokalee Middle School Project. They're leaving you alone. It's like, wow, they just hung you out to dry.
Well, thank you for having us. My name's Anissa Ellis with Vertex, and this is...
Look at Paul with Vertex.
Mary and Ford and Vertex.
So we're going to give you just kind of a quick project update. We'll run through construction progress, FFNE technology, and then transition and moving. That's what we're going to touch on. So first up, we have like a bunch of progress photos. So this is, every month or every six weeks or so, they do some drone shots, IWT Rich does. So this is a drone shot. You can see the existing middle school and obviously the new middle school. Most of the facade is complete. I'd say it's like 99% complete in this photo, and you can see the Norwood blue, that's the media center that kind of frames a media center there. Here we've got, that's the media center on the right. You can see the carpet's installed, it's pretty much complete. On the left is a general corridor in one of the fourth-floor wings, and there are three wings, and they're designated by different colors. So this is the Area C, which is yellow.
And that media center is amazing. Like, there's a ceiling thing up there that like matches the floor.
Yeah.
Which is, it's, it's amazing.
Ton of light, like, it's a great space.
Yeah. Can I move my office there?
I'm moving. Your office, I now know where to come from. No need to argue.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Here, we have a couple photos of the auditorium. The seating is all in, it actually went in in two days. It was amazing how quickly they did that. And then on the right, you can see the ceiling is the wood, which matches the wood kind of around the stage area. And then next photos, we've got, on the left, we've got the gym, and they just finished the floor recently. It looks fantastic. You can also see there's graphics on the walls, kind of behind the basketball nets. And then the unfinished areas, kind of like the orange areas, the far wall is getting a climbing wall, which they're installing currently, and then pads around, around the left side, and then the right side is bleachers. And then there's a picture of one of the conference rooms and the admin area. Here we've got a couple just general classrooms. The one on the right is kind of a specialty classroom, and it has a kitchen setup, it's got a washer dryer, and then the one on the left is a general classroom, which is what most of the classrooms look like. Here we've got, on the left, we've got an art classroom, and on the right, we've got a typical science classroom. So you can see they're a little bit different, they have the pull-down outlets for whatever specialty plans and they're doing in those rooms. And then here we've got, down in the first floor, we've got the band classroom, which is just being finished now, and then on the right, we've got one of the student collaborations and STEM classrooms. And here we've got, on the left, the upper dining commons, which is for the seventh and eighth grade. Again, another great space with a lot of light, big open area. And then on the right is just a typical restroom. So just kind of a quick schedule update, the project is on schedule for substantial completion June 6th, which is about six-ish weeks away, so we're coming down to the line. So this month, they're finishing a lot of the interior work. They've started programming a lot of the mechanical, electrical systems, and they're doing a lot of the testing for that. So next month, they're going to finalize all the systems, test it with the fire department and inspectional services, and we're in great shape, we think, for all of that work to happen. Furniture deliveries are going to start May 19th, which is really exciting also. Obviously, June 6th is our substantial completion date. June 19th, thankfully, there were no snow days, and that will be our first day of moving everything out of the existing building.
Why are you saying that out loud?
It's April, kids know. We had, I just chinked that. We had flurries the other day. And so we have a few days to move out of the existing building, and then over the summer, the contractor's going to obviously abate and demo the existing building. They have a lot of landscaping, a lot of site work, they've got to get the rest of the roadway that comes in the front of the building, some parking. And then in August, we've scheduled tours for incoming students of all grades, and the teachers return, and we can do a lot of teacher training, it'll be very exciting, so. Next, technology and FFNE update, both of those budgets are in great shape. We actually have access funds, and we have a running wish list of items that have come from various departments, teachers, faculty, and we are working through prioritizing that and purchasing a lot of those items so that they'll be available for the first day of school. And again, furniture is coming in about a little over a month. And again, furniture is coming in about a little over a month. As far as transition for moving out of the building, so my colleague Meredith and I, we went through the existing building and inventoried everything. We have a huge list, and we walked through with Tim and Margot, facilities, Eli from Food Services, and basically decided everything that was worth saving and which building it's going to. So whether it's one of the elementary schools, the high school, for storage at the Savage Center. So that process is ongoing. And then again, we have movers on board, and they have four days after school is out to move everything out of that building that is being salvaged and brought to whichever building is moving to.
And they'll also be moving some of our fifth grade classes.
Correct, yeah. So the, and yes, and everybody has, so we've sent moving crates to all the different buildings, so teachers can start packing all of their belongings kind of as, as we go. So it's not a mad rush at the end, is kind of the idea, so.
And you tonight will have a agenda item on the consent agenda that talks about the...
The inventory and the surplus.
The declaration of surplus, the things that we're getting rid of, and then...
And I think, I think is that it? Yep, so exactly. So this just kind of talks about that process. I don't know if you want to save it for later.
No, no, it's good, go ahead.
So, so basically, through the process of doing the inventory, and all of the different departments have basically identified what is worth money, and they're saving everything that's, you know, salvageable, which includes they're going to take some of the desks. There's a lot of specialty art shelving, racks, you know, a lot of unused supplies that will, you know, paper, glue, paint, all that stuff will be moved over. Instruments and the cafeteria tables will be moved to one of the elementary schools, just to kind of give you an idea. There's also a lot of equipment in the kitchen that's going to be going to different schools as well. And so anything that's left, we're deeming as surplus, and it's, you know, past its useful life and worth, not really worth anything. So we were just looking for you all to vote. I don't know if you want to do that now, if we have to wait till the end.
We could certainly move to now if you want, if folks have seen the surplus list already.
Yeah, you guys are ahead of moving it up.
Motion to approve.
Moved by David, by Joan. Any questions, concerns, comments on the surplus?
Could you just open it? Just because I think some people in the community will wonder what we're talking about.
Sure.
And I just want to be really transparent. I trust your process, but just so the community can understand.
Yeah, this is a pretty, just so the community understands, this is a very standard thing that we need to do in order to be able to dispose of these items, because they are owned by the school and by the town. I did actually have a question, not before we vote, it doesn't really matter on my vote, but do I remember correctly that we did kind of like a fire sale type thing at the high school? Did we, did we like...
There's nothing, there's nothing worth fire sailing in there.
Not fire sale, not fire sale in that people actually bought things, but it was like, oh, okay. Everything that would have been, somebody would, this is why I'm mentioning this, because people I know, somebody at home is going, I want a desk. You know, if, if it's worth going in your home, it's probably already going into another school, so.
Yes, exactly.
Just so people understand.
That's, that's right. That's, that's what I was saying. Tables are falling apart.
Yes.
Yep.
That's kind of where I was going with that. Sorry, that was a really roundabout way to do it.
Yeah, there is, it's, there's a huge spreadsheet that we've sorted in various ways, you know, kind of sorted to show everything that's being salvaged. And you can see the different colors are noting which building it's going to. And then, you know, everything else is really not worth anything. And same with technology, we went through that with Joe Kidd and his team, and he's, he's saving servers and, you know, whatever he needs out of the IT closets. And he said everything else is over 10 years old. And with technology, that is ancient, so.
If anyone's looking for that list, you can find it, because it's now in the public record, and you can read through it on your own.
Yep. It's a nice long list. Does anyone have any other questions, or?
Any other questions? Alright, so the motion on the table is to approve it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's five to zero.
Excellent. Any questions on the building progress in general, or?
Yeah. Any questions?
So, Anissa, we meet Monday, right?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we're having a meeting Monday for the middle school building committee onsite, and we're going to be doing a tour with the building committee through the new building. You're welcome to join.
Seems like a reason for me to work from home on Monday. I think that, that is usually open to the school committee members, correct?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I know, I've seen it once, but when it was like, not like this.
Oh, yeah, it's pretty much, yeah. It looks good. And it's been, you know, they've been working on cleaning out all of the extra material to get it out of the building so they can finish the last few spaces, so it's encouraging.
I will tell you too, my daughter came home for a visit. We had a family thing over the weekend, and she drove by the site. And she came, first thing she opened the door, she goes, can we talk about the middle school? What happened? I was like, you haven't been home for a while. She's like, it looks fantastic. I was like, yes, it does.
We're going back to my office lounge.
Yeah.
I will say the librarian is very excited about her space, so.
Sure.
Alright. And then, Anissa, on Monday, we are talking about the outdoor space.
Yeah.
Right, just so the committee knows, we've been talking about here, advocating for, so we'll talk about it on Monday, and then we can bring an update back to the school committee after that.
Yep, definitely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
We dismissed?
You are dismissed, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Lovely. Alright. Lovely.
See you tomorrow.
Alright, so continuing on with the middle school theme, we have Dr. Frazek to join us to discuss the middle school transition planning.
I'm not going to stand up until someone confirms I'm active.
I'm sorry, that wasn't very nice.
Mr. Left cries wolf too many times.
So clearly, I'm going to have to do some badge restrictions on the new building. Who will not be let in?
I'm going to want to come in.
One thing I do want to mention, just because I think people listening, I get asked this a lot, every single piece of artwork is being catalogued, every single memorial is being catalogued. We talk about it at the building committee, I don't know if we've ever talked about it here. So those things are not on that surplus list by any means.
That's a great point.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. I get a lot of questions about a lot of memorials that I did not know were there, that I am now aware of.
So there were a lot of questions that came up about transition timing, and kind of what we were doing, the processes we were following. And we've been meeting regularly for the entire year. Margaret had been meeting with her staff and teachers and kids way well before I got involved in this too. And I said, let's meet, and she's like, I've been meeting, let's go. So we're meeting more, and so there's been so many local meetings to kind of go here. So this is kind of a culmination of that work. So I think she calls it transitioning people, places, and things.
I like to be creative. Alright, so the people is really the biggest one. The sheet, Anissa there, really handles more of the transitioning of things. So people is our big one. And so the first step is what we normally do when we have our sixth graders, our incoming sixth graders coming up, is we do a parent open house in the spring, and then usually we do a step-up day. And then we do like an ice cream social with tours and some things in the summer. So we can't do all of those things this year, and they look very different. So we are still doing, on May 8th at 6 o'clock, we will have an open house for grade four and five parents at CMS. Normally, we do tours, we kind of do stuff like that. We're not really touring, because they're not going to be in that building. But we'll be doing a lot of question and answers, a presentation. The guidance counselors will be there, some teachers will be there. Mustang mentors usually come as well to kind of answer some of those student-type questions. It is primarily for parents, students are always welcome. We never say no to students. And then we're kind of doing a non-stepping step-up day. So we're going, they, we can't bring everybody to us because there's nowhere to put them and nothing for them to see. So we instead decided that we were going to go out to them. So we're kind of, we're putting some Mustang mentors and guidance counselors and administrators on some buses, and we're going on a nice little tour of all the Norwood elementaries. So we've had the principals sign up for the different days. You can see we've got the Cleveland, Callahan, Prescott, Vulture, and Oldham. And meeting, I think most schools are doing a fourth grade meeting and a fifth grade meeting. We kind of gave them that option depending on their sizes. And do the things that we kind of normally do at step-up, where, or at least the things that we talk about, like what does it mean to come to the middle school? Like, what are some things that'll be different? What are some things that'll be the same? And those conversations will be a little bit different, because my fourth graders going into fifth grade are going to have a little bit different experience than fifth going into sixth. Again, we're bringing our Mustang mentors down. Those are our seventh graders that choose to become Mustang mentors for grade eight. So they're seventh graders right now when they start this. They will also work with them when they come the following year. So when they are eighth graders, they continue to work with the fourth and fifth grade classes. So it's kind of a nice connection, but they kind of answer all those questions, go over all those things from, will I have a locker? To, do we eat lunch? To, how, what happens if I get lost? And I'm like, you will be in good company, because we will all be lost. It'll be fine. But all those kind of questions and answers, so doing that piece.
And that aligns with the conversations that the students brought us last time, having those connections come up, so it's glad to see that.
Yeah, no, it's, it's really a great part in that having the eighth graders do it is, is just so much fun for them to try and remember what it was like to be a little sixth grader, because it goes by, they, they really, really understand how fast it goes by, but how different you are from sixth grade to eighth grade. So it's really nice. And then we're doing a little bit more this summer, both because we got two grades that are moving up, and they didn't, we know they're not going to have that kind of typical step-up experience, which is a lot more involved when we do it in the spring normally at the school. So right now, with everything going on schedule and the way things are supposed to be, on August 20th and 21st, we're going to do a grade five orientation and a grade six orientation. And those will be a little bit more in-depth. We'll have the kids coming from like nine to 11. We're still kind of working out the, the details. But nine to 11, do some different activities with each other, some team building with each other, do tours of the new building, see where their homeroom is, so they have an idea about that. Hoping to feed them, I got to talk to Eli about that. So Eli, if you're watching, I got to talk to you. You know, try and feed them a little bit of, of lunch there, and then kind of send them home. So kind of a similar experience, one day for grade five, one day for grade six. And then the following week, we're going to do kind of a more kind of open house type experience for grade seven and eight, because they, they know what it means to be a middle schooler. I assure you, they know what it means to be a middle schooler. But it's really about getting them familiar with the, with a new building and a new place, and how do they get in and out. So doing some tours, again, having our Mustang mentors there to help. Some teachers that always volunteer to come and help, and so things like that. So a little bit less kind of, I don't want to say structured, but a little bit less formal and involved than the orientations for the two younger grades, but still tours and kind of questions and answers, and just kind of helping them get a little bit familiar before they start school. And they should have their schedules by then as well, so they can kind of take a look at where's their team at, where's, you know, what are their team areas at? Where are their specials at, which will be a little bit different, and stuff like that.
And just a quick note for those folks that are watching that might not have read the memos. We can't, as Dr. Frazek said, we can't actually get kids and people into the school until the end of August. We'll have a temporary permit after substantial completion on the 6th of June. Administration and teachers will be able to get in there for the summer to get prepared, but we're not allowed to have any students in there until we get our final occupancy permit, which is just prior to these visits.
Yeah, so it's all kind of contingent on all of those things happening. And then just a few pieces of what general education programming looks like at the middle school. So our department chairs will go from five to 12. They currently go from six to 12. One nice piece is they will teach one less class than they currently do so that they will be able to spend more time at the middle school. That's always been kind of the, us having to kind of share with the high school has been a little bit difficult, so that will be a nice addition. The specials that are offered, so grade five will have art, music, wellness, world language, and library, and then STEM gets added, actually in grade, in grade six as well there. Computers gets added in grade seven and eight. I forgot to add that piece, sorry about that. We are moving to a trimester schedule, which is kind of every 12 weeks, which I think we've talked about before when I've done the scheduling. And then teams are continuing to meet to discuss curriculum modifications. We actually had a first really awesome meeting with all 12 of the fifth grade teachers that are coming up, plus a bunch of my teachers, both from sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade joined, just to really, to start that talk of what does a five to eight curriculum look like? And no, we're not starting from scratch, because weirdly, they learn stuff in fifth grade now. But it's really more, you know, how are they aligning? Are there things that we want to adjust or switch or change? And just, it's kind of a nice way for them to kind of become one staff too. Because in the same way that we need to team build with our kiddos, we need to team build with our staff as well to create a community. So there's that piece.
I can try to read that for you.
Thank you. I'm like, well, I'm not going to be able to see that.
Just on the additional staffing side, just as a reminder, we're adding 12 general education fifth grade teachers that have been transferred over. Art, music, ELE, which is English Language Education, school counselor, .6 admin assistant, and an assistant principal were all added in the budget process. And we have some transfers from world language and wellness, as well as .2 music transferring over to support the general education programming for kids.
Any questions about this slide before we move on?
And there's been a lot of questions about special ed programming.
Yes. So I'm going to do my best to read, but Tim, maybe you can help me out a little bit, because my eyesight is not this good.
That's not going to help.
Okay. So inclusion students follow the same schedule as the general education students unless individual determinations are made. So this is currently true. We follow a co-teaching inclusion model, and that will be true in grade five. We have a dedicated special educator liaison that goes, that is aligned with each team. We primarily co-teach math and ELA in grade five. That constitutes reading and writing, so we'll keep working with that model. Students may get, do get pulled out for some services, academic support, which occurs in place of a special. And then speech and language kind of has to get fit into the schedule if a student has that. Reading is done in place of a special. And OT or PT is usually, they are very complicated schedules, because I think we have one OT and one PT shared in multiple areas around. So we kind of piece them in, but a very, very small selection of students have occupational or physical therapy.
Want me to help?
Yeah, thanks.
Yep. So obviously, the inclusion teachers, students are following that same schedule as was shared prior. The program teachers go to the elementary school with the corresponding program to meet students and conduct informal observations. They're going to actually go to the elementary schools to meet with those kids.
They've actually already started. So, yeah, so they have, they do it kind of in two different ways. They come down for transition meetings, and that's more like meeting with the parents, talking about what the services are. And then they also actually visit the programs themselves, so they kind of meet with the kids, talk with the kids. Often, they do observations as well. So I want to say they go three, four, five, eight, 12, kind of depends on how many times they need to. And then those kiddos also often come to visit. So it's a little bit different this year. We're still having them come to visit, but they're just going to go into the program, kind of talk to the teacher, meet the other, you know, talk to the other kids that are in the program, as opposed to, normally, they would do kind of a full tour and all that sort of thing. But we still want to make those connections, so they feel comfortable when they are coming up.
That's great. And then obviously, just clearly, IAPT meetings are going to be held as needed for individual transitions for those kids that need it.
And a member of the staff from the Coakley comes to all of those, and also Amanda Kalella, who's the team chair, goes to many of those, like whichever ones are needed. But there's always a member of us there, because we know that how things work at the elementary is a little bit different. a little bit different. And that'll be doubly true for grade five, just because we're kind of adjusting a little bit while they're doing it. But all services that students currently get in grade five, they will continue to get when they go to the middle school in grade five. That's how IAPs work. And we certainly want kids to be successful. So we want to make sure that they have all the things that they need to be successful at the middle school.
And then there's been some questions about where those program locations are going to be. So I asked Dr. Fratton to put those in this slide deck.
So you'll note that a lot of those rooms say 32, 132, 232, 332, 432. So you know that beautiful room that we saw that had the washer and dryer in it and the fridge? And so that is our PACS program for some of our kiddos with some of our most significant special needs. We have four of those rooms because they just stack them on top of each other, which is amazing. So our LEAP programs have a room like that and our PLCs have a room like that. The other rooms, some of them are half rooms. Actually, these are all programs. So they might all, some of our smaller programs, like the task classrooms are half-size classrooms. But all of our therapeutic programs also have a calming space within them, which is amazing. And what I try and do when I assign them, so the lovely people at AI3 assign everything according to the MSBA, and that's where we start. And then we go and look and say, so I want, if most of my task students are in seventh and eighth grade, I want my, I want that room to be as close to my seventh and eighth grade as it can, knowing that it's two grades, so it's going to be two floors, so we have to make some concessions there. But the idea is that there is no wing for special education because that would be grossly inappropriate. There is no, like, we cordon them off in one area or another area. The idea is to have them as closely aligned with their peers as we possibly can. So when we place rooms, that is our goal. So that for the most part, our fifth and sixth grade students are in a classroom in the fifth and sixth grade areas. It might be fifth, it might be sixth because I only have so many rooms to put all the kiddos in. And we just recently added, I think it's the second LEAP program. So I have to do a little bit of shifting because right now every room that I change, I have to tell 18 people. Next year, I don't have to do that. I just change rooms. But it'll be very exciting. But right now, I've got to tell a lot of people. So I have to kind of figure out, and one, I didn't want to make a snap decision. I want to take a look and say, okay, if I'm adding a second LEAP and one of my leaps is on the fourth floor, that means either the first or second floor, I would like the other LEAP to be so that if we have a five, six LEAP program and a seven, eight LEAP program, it makes sense geographically so that they are with their peers. So that is the overarching goal for where we place all of our program. For the inclusion, the inclusion special ed rooms, which aren't really on there, they are aligned with the team. So they're all in the same grade level as wherever the student grades are at. So in other words, if you have a student who's a seventh grader on an IEP and they get academic support, that academic support class occurs on the seventh grade floor. I don't think I said it very well.
And just as you know already, the additional staffing that we have allocated to special ed programming, we have three full-time inclusion teachers, right, two that are transferring from the elementary and then one that was placed in the budget. We have program teachers that are being transferred from PLC and LEAP. We have related service providers that are going to be allocated as we need to. And we did a lot of work, we've been doing a lot of work on the allocation of providers and we're actually at a good point right now as of this morning about what we need in each location. So, and obviously, you know, you'll hear again a little bit about additional coordination for student services that we'll provide over there, which is great.
Question. Do we have more kids in the LEAP program than we anticipated? Is that why we need the second classroom?
I'm going to go with they're not.
And do we, the language-based, do we still have that program at the Coakley?
It's not a sub-separate program.
We don't have it anymore.
Okay, it's all inclusion. Great, okay. And then the bridge program, that is students who are coming back from like hospitals or other things back in, no, that's not the bridge grant?
No, that's BRIGHT.
Oh, that's BRIGHT, okay. What is bridge?
Bridges is a second task classroom. So we have two task classrooms. One is for students with kind of more outward behaviors. Bridges is for students with anxiety who maybe just struggle even to come into school, go into a classroom, kind of more inward anxiety behaviors.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Oh, good luck.
So then I distract, wow, wow, I had a lot of phase in my eyesight when I wrote this. I'm not going to read anything but the top. So I just kind of wanted to outline this, like, we always determine where kids are going to go on the first day of school. It was particularly important because I'm like, ooh, I've got four different groups of students. I've got to figure out where they're all going. So grade five, they're on the first floor, they're right there, their teachers are right there. They're going to go directly to their homerooms. They'll know who their homeroom is. Hopefully, most of them have gone to orientation. I will have an army of Mustang mentors and usually some bright colored shirt that they really detest wearing, but we make them wear anyways, everywhere to help guide them. So fifth grade is going to go right into homerooms. They can get with their teachers, meet their teachers, do whatever they need to do. And this is just the first day. After that, there's kind of more of a regular flow of what happens. Grade six is always met in the auditorium. So I said, let's keep it consistent. We'll have them go into the auditorium when they first arrive at school. Kind of do a little spiel. Their homeroom teachers come there. We collect them by homeroom and take them off to their homeroom. Grade seven, we decided to do in cafeteria one just because I need a big space to collect them all in. So we'll have them kind of collect there. We'll have all the tables labeled with the different homeroom teachers. So if they know their homeroom teacher, they can go there. If not, there is a little army of people with computers that look it up for them. And then grade eight, very similar, but in cafeteria three. So they're not trying to like wander the building. So seven, eight, which is a little bit different, like what we normally do is they go in and they find their homeroom when they get to school on that first day because they kind of already know the layout. But we know they won't, so we'll do a little bit of that. And then the first day of school, I'm not sure what I wrote up there, but we'll see, we'll see how much I remember. The first day of school is not, is never a typical school day. So kids come in, they stay with their homeroom teacher for about two-thirds of the day. And then we do kind of a mini schedule in the afternoon so they get to kind of see all their other teachers. But it's really, where do I go? How do I get there? How long should it be? Where's my locker? What are the expectations? We do some team building activities, like just lots of different things. And that's what we always do for our first couple of days of school. This is no different. We call it the first three days. And I say, nobody has ever gone home on the first day of school and said, whoo, that syllabus review was fire. Let's, I can't wait to go back. So we try and kind of add a little bit of fun into our first couple of days because we want the children to want to come back on day two, which is an uphill battle when they are 11 to 14, I'm not going to lie. And now they'll be 10 to 14. So we're hoping that the 10, the 10, 11-year-olds will like carry the enthusiasm through the school for us a little bit. But we do that on the first day, kind of get to know everything. I see something about the lunchroom, make sure they know where the lunchroom is, how the lunchroom will work, which, you know, we're still going to be figuring out because it's going to be the same, but yet a little bit different in terms of setup. So kind of figure out how those things work. At lunch for those first few days, kids always sit by homeroom. We do that all grade levels just so again, everyone knows where to go those first couple of days. And then we kind of slowly but surely let them kind of figure things out themselves. Is there anything written on there that I didn't hit?
No, you did great. You did great.
All right. And then staff transitions, so that's the other piece. Not only am I moving 1,100 children into the building, I'm moving, I think I'm up to 135 or 140 teachers into the building. So we've already, as you can see, really started with a lot of stuff. In March, we, fifth graders did some tours of the new CMS. We started doing some scheduling meetings. We've got to, we'll keep scheduling. We need to schedule a few more of those. We're in the middle of MCAS, so it gets a little bit trickier to do scheduling.
What do you mean by teacher scheduling meeting?
Oh, to talk about, so first, we really were looking at their schedule. What did they want their schedule to look like? Like how often, like how long each block was? How did the rotation work? Where did their specials fit in? So that kind of a piece. So they kind of shared some of that information with us. And then we met as teams to kind of talk about what does it mean to be a four-person team at the middle school. And then, like I said, our last one was really about curriculum. So a little bit less scheduling, a little bit more, what are we teaching and how are we teaching it? Then April, we're going to, we've been doing some teacher team building. So if anyone knows Aileen Siegel, they know that she is in charge of corralling all of my teachers by any means necessary. So everything from inviting them to some fun staff activities that we do to, I don't know, would you call it coercion? I'm not sure. Like we're doing a Red Sox game, like a Teacher Appreciation Red Sox game that she's kind of invited our incoming fifth grade teachers to. So doing some different activities like that, just starting to kind of get that piece, staffing changes.
I can take this one. Yes, I'm working on all the changes for any staffing that have to make moves, you know, voluntarily, involuntarily, or however that works. I'm shooting for mid-April, probably right, just before or right after break to actually have those, have those down. There's a process that I have to follow if there aren't volunteers. So that might take a little while longer, but that's my goal right now. After this morning's meeting, I feel like we can really start moving on that. So it's really good.
Staff packing. So we have been packing and purging since the beginning of the year. Teachers have crates. We kind of start them out with a few and they have to convince me why they need more because I'm like, hmm, what are we not throwing away? Let's throw away some more things. And then really working with Anissa at Vertex to really kind of make that happen. They'll be sending some movers in for places like the office. Like I cannot close the office until the 18th and you'll see, I have to be out on the 19th. So I might need a little bit of help to get that done. I don't know if you want to talk about the next one in terms of the additional time.
Yeah, so we're working with the MSBA, obviously, too, and our retired building committee to see if we can't fund additional time if staff need it after school, the week before they have to move. So the goal is to, you know, we've been working on the packing and getting that all done, but if for whatever reason, there needs to be some more time, which there could be just to get them that time somehow after school. There were a lot of conversations about possible early release days at the end of the year, but that just seems really problematic in terms of, you know, the middle school and the fifth grade and all those kind of things. So we're trying to move it this way. But we're hopeful that most people can pack up and get ready to go. But we will have some, some thoughts on how to remedy that if not everybody's done yet. It's those folks with art classrooms, you know, a lot of materials that they might have to move over that we're concerned about.
Yeah, like art, science, library, we're actually doing early, so that one will be taken care of, which is nice. And then, as you can see, once, on the 18th is our last day of school and on the 19th, the movers come, which is fine, fine. And they move over the next four days getting everything in.
And then we're going to try to have them allocate their time to the fifth grades at the end of that cycle so we can get them out of the old school before it gets demolished. But then we can then go to the other elementary schools and bring the fifth grade materials up.
Mr. Luff, are we talking about that on Monday with the school building committee, getting us in that budget?
I don't know if that got on there yet.
Okay, that might be the day meeting.
Yeah. I have not, well, I actually, I'm there tomorrow, so I might get on there. We'll see. Yep.
Most of room assignments are complete. The mockup classroom is going to be pretty exciting. So on the, is the 16th our half-day?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
I'm surprised.
Yeah, that date doesn't seem right in my head, but I'll trust you. So on the half-day, we have the fifth grade teachers coming as well. They're going to do a bunch of different trainings. And we know it's just an initial training, but it kind of gets that first step in the door, like MNS systems and communication systems and all the different things in the building that teachers need to know. We're working with Joe Kidd to kind of set up, what kind of technology pieces do we need to do training for kind of an initial training?
Touch views will be in that classroom and all that kind of stuff. The touch view will be in the classroom too and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they're setting up a couple of like fully ready-to-go mock classrooms so they can kind of show how everything works. They've already done, and actually, they're ClearTouch.
Thank you.
They're ClearTouch. And we actually started that just in March. ClearTouch was able to come and do some demos with us over at the school, which was really fun, too. So doing that on that half-day. Then, as you can see, we, the administration gets to move over on the 23rd and I don't know anything about a ribbon cutting.
Yeah, we're working on a ribbon cutting that last week of August sometime. So once we know we're in and prior school opening, we'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony. We'll let you all know when that is.
Can my only request be it not be the Friday going into long weekend?
I thought it was going to be Saturday. It doesn't have to be the Friday. No, we'll do it on Sunday. No. Yes, I will, we will work on that.
Thank you. And then, I don't know if you can.
I can add this. Yeah, so this is just, we'll continue to community outreach about this. Obviously, you've seen the bi-weekly parent square newsletters with this in there and we'll continue to add things to there. You know, Margot's been working with the PTO regularly. We're going to be advocating and letting the CPAC know what's going on. I'm unsure if that happened the other day, as well as LPAC. You know, Margot talked about the orientation step-up days. I think she's doing flyers at some point?
Yeah, probably next week. That's the goal. In between MCAS.
And we'll add to this outreach as we go along and we'll kind of amp it up now that we're kind of coming closer so folks know what's going on. And that's it.
I just have one suggestion with community outreach is just the way kids go from the Willett to elementary school. It might be helpful to just see like pictures or images of like, this is what a day would look like, this room, this room, this is the cafeteria with the mock images they have because I have a fourth grader who's very scared. And I think that helps.
We can use real pictures. So we don't have to do mock ones. We can go in and take pictures of some of the actual places so they see it.
Because they're starting to talk and I think they're pretty anxious right now.
Joe, I didn't hear you mention Coakley Connects. Is that happening still?
Oh, yeah. So Coakley Connects happens over the summer. It's going to be at the high school, so I'm quite at the right building. But yes, so that is for fourth going into fifth and fifth going into sixth. I think we, JJ, correct me if my numbers are wrong, I can do like 100-ish, 75 to 100 students, something like that for Coakley Connects? I just can't remember. I was talking.
Wonder where into that, yeah.
Yeah. Because we do like small groups and they do kind of a mini middle school model where they do some different engagement pieces, which is tons of fun.
And then my other question was, will there be an opportunity for the community at large to tour the building?
That's really not a me question. That's more.
Yeah, you just happen to be. I don't know the answer to that yet. I think it depends on when we open it. If it happened, it would probably be happening on a weekend or an evening of some sort, but we can talk to the committee about that, definitely. I think our goal right now is to get kids in and all that kind of stuff. And so we're on that tight timeframe. But I think it would be nice for the community to see what they invested in. Yeah.
Just to add to our to-do list at some point for our policy subcommittee, we probably need to look at our rental fee policy and building use, just off the top of my head. Now that more people are going to want to rent out the Coakley and the auditorium, I think we need to look at some things in our policy.
That feels like a budget, rental fees. That feels like a budget.
No, that's a policy measure.
I'm on both, so whatever you want.
No, too. Sorry, Joe. Sweet. Sounds like it's budget timing.
I am passing the buck on that one. Budgeted out. Any other questions, discussion, comments?
I think you've done a wonderful job. Thank you. Just to bring it back to what our students during the SAC report at the last meeting told us, I think you've hit on most of it. But, and to Judith's point, like kids are anxious and that emotional support. And in the slides that we saw last meeting, there was about like 75% of kids who felt like, once I get to Coakley, I'm going to have somebody to support me as an adult. But 25% were feeling really anxious about that. So in addition to the outreach, I wonder if like all the schools have like the fifth grade committees, which to share probably fourth and fifth grade committees. I wonder if we want to meet with that group of parents because they're really working with those kids.
Yeah. And I would say that's not unusual. I would say that 25% of my normal fifth graders coming up every single year, because it's a big change and they are equal parts excited and nervous. I can, I can tell you, I have 260 eighth graders who are super ready to be high schoolers, except for the minute that they aren't. So that anxiety, any type of change brings anxiety. So 75% is pretty good, but I think having them feel that they have a connection to an adult or that they will be able to make that connection is huge. And I'm hoping that some of these things where we send down, even sending down eighth graders so that they know that we are not a after-school special and things like that do not, you know, we have kids that really, really care and are really, really helpful. And I think that's what my sixth graders have been finding out year after year, is that it's a helpful place.
Mr. Luff, I think I know the answer, but are there fifth grade teachers right now in every building that are moving to the Coakley or is there any elementary school who does not have a staff member going to the new school next year?
No, there's some from every building.
Because I wonder if we could do something with those teachers too, right? Like the Cleveland teachers, the Council teachers are already in the building. Maybe if they get to know their fourth grade cohort and fifth grade cohort, then that adult they know, you're going to this new building with me?
Yeah, and I think most of them are fifth grade teachers.
Most of them are fifth grade teachers.
Prescott, I think they're.
There's two, there's two teachers from the Prescott that are younger levels that are moving up.
But just a connection they could start to make now.
I think they actually have been. Because talking to them, they've, they've been doing some work with the fourth grade coming up, which I think is typical, right? Like fourth grade coming to fifth grade in the same building. They kind of work with them. But it'd be nice to be sort of intentional about making.
My understanding too is that some of those, those kids are shifting around in fifth grade now anyway to some of those different teachers at times?
Correct.
So they're meeting them now anyway, right? As part of the natural transition in. The fifth grader, not the fourth graders, but.
Yeah, but just to help those fourth graders know, I know this teacher. He or she may not be my teacher next year, but at least I know they're going to be in the building. It's a familiar face that I can look for.
Having grasped that there first, I thank you. Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Just thank you. This is very helpful.
Happy to, happy to answer questions.
Thank you for staying very late after I casted.
And I guess I'd say too, no, for any parent that's out there and any parent that has a question, please have them email me. You know, and you know, that if you email me, you get about 20 minutes and then you get a response. Because that's just how I live my life. So, but email me. I'm more than happy to answer any question I can. If I can't say, I don't know the answer to that one, but I'll let you know when I do. Thank you.
Thanks, Margot, very much.
All right. We have one more riveting appearance. We have Ms. Laurie, she's here to talk to us about middle school trends. No, sorry, it's just.
Not at all.
Tiered focus monitoring update. My, something covered that and I was like, I'm reading the same thing twice.
Good evening and welcome to this evening.
Margot, thank you.
As many of you know, we have been undergoing our tiered focus monitoring. When we started the process, it was called a tiered focus monitoring. It is now called an integrated monitoring review. And for those of you who've been at this as long as we have, it's what the old coordinated program review used to be. So DESI keeps evolving.
Recycling.
Evolving.
That's very generous saying that they evolve.
I'm sorry?
Very generous.
She said recycle, too.
Okay, so this evening, I'm here to talk to you about the TFM or Integrated Monitoring Review that we have undergone this school year. So what this is, is it monitors our compliance and regulatory requirements around special education and civil rights. So the scope of the review, there are three different phases. There's discovery, engagement and closeout. And the DESI regularly audits, I don't want to say audit, reviews, different categories within student services as well as civil rights. So there's a group A that looks at one thing and there's a group B that looks at another thing. We were group B this year. So we had to submit all of our documents to DESI by October 4th. There were a lot of documents that had to be uploaded and sent along. The date of our onsite visit was December 17th. We had two different chairpeople come. Kate went with one, I went with the other, and we were able to conquer everything that they wanted to see in a day, which was great. We got our pre-finding corrections on January 31st. This was an opportunity for us to say, hey, wait a minute, we showed you this or we gave you this. And then our final report came out March 19th. From the final report, then, we are required to do corrective action for anything that was a finding. And that was actually submitted today at 3:17 this afternoon. So we are moving right along. So the group B standards takes a look at license. So, the group B standards takes a look at licensure and professional development, parent-student community engagement, facilities and classroom observations, oversight, time and learning, and equal access. So, those were the areas in which we were reviewed. So then, once this discovery is completed, they analyze the data and prepare information for their onsite visit. This is, there was a lot of back and forth between us and DESI during this time, I think I talked to Julie every day, Julie is our chairperson, and we get everything in line, so that we are able to then have them onsite. I wanna give a shout-out to Julie Evans, who was our chairperson from DESI, she was amazing, I have done this many times, and I will say, she made this as easy as could possibly be made. So, the next is engagement, this is when DESI actually came to visit us, they did some virtual interviews, they did virtual meetings with teachers, they did actual onsite observations of classrooms, onsite observations of facilities, and they did a lot of record review during this period of time. So, this all culminates into our Integrated Monitoring Review Report. I will say that this was, this is a whole lot of work, it could not be done without a massive team, and I really wanna thank everybody who was involved in making this happen, because Norwood did really well, overall, in our findings. So, the ratings are commendable, implemented, partially implemented, and not implemented. I'm happy to say that we are only implemented or partially implemented, which is great, so the areas in which we were implemented, you can see, each one of these is a category or standard by which we have to meet the legal requirements. So, child find, CPAC, assistive technology, IEP implementation, accountability and financial, administrator of special education, appropriate special education teacher licensure, appropriate certs and licensures for our related service providers, and registration of any educational interpreters. With civil rights, we also, there, you'll see within the civil rights, there's some carryover from special education, so some things that you would think, why is that in civil rights, it should be special education, it just is how they do it. So, you know, we have full access to programs, information being translated, our school year schedules, structured learning time, accessibility to extracurricular activities, bullying, student discipline, annual and continuous notifications regarding our non-discrimination coordination, physical restraint, staff training on confidentiality of student records, accessibility to district programs and services for students with disabilities, and a curriculum review. So, all of those were considered to be implemented.
Including school year calendars, just saying, right? So, this was the one that we talked about a while ago, where we had, we kept it the same this year, because we had modified it for next year, and it was in compliance, we had that conversation with them, and they were good.
So, partially implemented for our special education, professional development, this is specifically for our transportation drivers. So, where we were cited is an annual training for transportation drivers, as well as documentation to each driver about the students that they are driving. So, we are currently in the process of thinking about how we wanna go about doing that, respecting, obviously, FERBA, and individual student rights, but also giving the bus drivers enough information so that they can be supportive during the transportation routes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Laurie, did we do a training with them?
We've already done the training, yes. Yep, we did the training, and that will happen annually.
Well, you said that was just for the special education transportation, not for the.
It was the transportation department that we employ.
So, not the, the.
Not Conley.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, special education facilities, this was also very specific to where PT services occur, at the Balch, Callahan, and Cleveland. As far as civil rights, I have come to you earlier in the year for language that needed to be changed in the handbooks, it has been changed, it has been uploaded, it's just, we were doing that post when we needed to be doing it in order to have the report. The notice to students who are sixteen years old or over, who are leaving, this is a process and procedure thing that we are working on with the high school, right now.
Can I ask a question around?
Yeah.
Leaving school is an incredibly long term.
I know, separating.
So, does that mean like transferring, withdrawing?
So, what it really means is that, once a student's been absent ten days, we have to reach out, and we have to continue to reach out annually.
If we don't know where they went.
So, my job, yeah, I know what that's like.
I just wanna back up a little bit on the Conley piece. I think there is a requirement to give them information, and I think we will incorporate that somehow into next year, even though, if it was cited or not.
It was.
Yeah, there's probably some conversations with those drivers on, any kids that are on their vehicles, any additional assistance or accommodations, so.
And is that just kids who have an IDP, or is that like kids who have a health plan? What are we talking about?
I think anytime you have a kid, kiddo, who requires some kind of assistance or need, where they need to know, right, based on FERBA, then we make sure they know. And I'm not saying that's not happening now, I just wasn't cited here, it's something we can look at next year.
Yeah. So, staff training regarding civil rights responsibilities, this one is actually offset, this was the ARC's ed, we did go back to them and show them exactly in ARC's ed where this information was, but it was during the process, and so it was still a finding. Again, comparability of facilities, this comes down to PT, which was the SE-55 finding, and then an institutional self-evaluation.
Just, ARC's ed, the program that we use to do our staff training at the beginning of the year for all the compliance pieces, is vetted by their legal attorneys through DESI, and almost, I wanna say like seventy percent of the district are using it now, and so, yeah, they should have found it in the first place, but they didn't.
They charged us an arm and a leg to use it, too, if only there were some agency that could train us, that made the rules and do it for cheap.
So, you know, what did you say the facility findings were, Balch, Callahan, and Cleveland?
Cleveland.
Around what?
PT. PT's happening in the hallways.
Okay.
Due to space issues.
Next year, would that be the issue?
Yeah.
Were we found, was that a finding in 22, when we had the tiered focus monitoring? I don't remember here.
Twenty-two probably wasn't this model, every three years, they do the different standards, so you're in group A, which is most.
Oh, we are group A, and.
No, we're group B, yeah.
I see, okay.
So, where we are currently out, currently at, is the closeout stage, so we developed a corrective action plan with Julie from DESI, and that was submitted today. We have outlined what our progress reports will be, and what will be due each time progress reports are due, and it has to be resolved within one year, so March 18th of '26, all of this needs to be resolved.
So, will you come back to us on that day?
No.
Okay.
So, through this process, there's ongoing technical assistance from DESI.
Sorry.
As I mentioned earlier, we were assigned a chairperson who was amazing, we had multiple Google meets with her, and phone calls and emails on almost a daily basis, that will continue through the corrective action timeframe. Again, I cannot say enough about how many people had their hands in this, it was truly a collaborative effort, and certainly my team, Karen and Kate, had a huge part in making this as successful as it was.
Karen, are we able to get a copy of the full report?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Was it linked to the memo that was in there?
No, I can, I can link it to the memo.
So, it's not a follow-up to 22, so it's not looking at the findings in 2022?
Nope.
It's a totally separate.
This is a brand new cycle.
Yep, every three years, it happens.
Different schedule cycle.
And was Lisa Perdros' department included in this one?
Not this one.
Not this one, okay.
She has her own separate.
She has her last year.
She has her last year, okay.
Yep, the ELO review is separate from this particular one.
Two years ago, two years ago, because when I came in, you guys break your back.
Was that the accessibility review?
No.
So, remember we had a tiered focus monitoring review in 22, and then they came back at us a couple of months later, and said we needed to have an accountability review? And then, we were like, why do we have to do this? And I don't know if we did it.
I don't remember that, to be totally honest, though, I didn't do the 22 review.
Right.
Because I.
You were out, yeah.
We can take a look, see what was in there.
Okay.
Yep. We also have a McKinney, McKinney Vento review, we just got selected for, that's gonna be starting next year, so.
Selected.
Review from.
She's selected, yeah.
We got selected.
Lucky, yes.
Random selection. Well, some of what we're talking about tonight overlap with the student services audit.
I think it will, and I think we'll use both sets of recommendations and incorporate them to get a clear path forward next year. I'd be surprised if some of those delivery of services pieces, you know, in the halls, those things don't come up. You know, I think there's been a ton of interviews and focus groups with staff and yourselves, if you were there, you know, and, and all different groups that will incorporate everything, that will, I'm sure, have some of these pieces as part of that discussion.
Okay.
So, we'll kinda get the game plan together with both, and then Kate'll run with it.
Okay.
So, I get to hand her the baton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so, that brings us to the end of our appearances, thank you, everybody. And that brings us to our next agenda item, is our superintendent report and weight agenda.
Thank you.
Minus one agenda item.
Thanks, guys, minus one, really good. So, I've been discussing with you all the curriculum coordination options that I've been considering for a while. As a reminder, and for you, Judith, because you haven't been here, with the move to the fourth grade up to, the fifth grade up to the middle school, and the department chairs being sitting, sitting at six to twelve, the additional two-hundred-and-ninety students, we really wanted to figure out a way where we could ensure that there was appropriate curriculum coordination being provided at the middle school. There were a tremendous amount of conversations about this, there were thoughts, and you guys have supported the budget this year, to allow funding for either department chairs at the middle school, taking those middle school content level teachers, and making them department chairs, which would require point four release time for each of those content teachers, so that was one of the options, as well as the option of, if we couldn't support that, of getting a curriculum coordinator at the middle school. Those didn't seem great, in my mind, as we were going through these processes, and since we had the funding to support some of this, I then went back to all the department chairs, and I said, listen, you know, you shared with me a while back that you feel like you didn't have enough time to give all the support you could to the middle school, some, that wasn't all people, some people were great with it, but I said, what do you think about this possibility, because I wanna vet it, have conversations about it, spoke to Jody about it, spoke to those folks about it, spoke to Hugh about it, spoke to Margot about it, spoke to some of you about it individually, just to have a conversation. And ultimately, we decided that to offer the opportunity to do five through twelve for our core content level teachers, but I wanted to also not take away their opportunities to be in the classroom, right, if they, if they wanted to keep their foot in, because they're teachers, that's what they're here for, but I also wanted them to have enough time to support, right, the content areas. So, some are going to remain in one class, I want them, want it to be no more than one class, it could be just one semester if they want to, it really depends on how that works, and some may do no classes, which is in conversations where it's okay with that, it fits in the contractual obligations, it's a little weird to be a department chair with no classes, so they're all gonna try to kinda do that, but I'm gonna support them to do that, and that will allow us to have actually all of our department chairs, grades five through twelve, the core content for classes, we'll have zero to one classes they'll teach, the other ones will have, continue the current class load that they have, which I think are around two classes or so, art, and, sorry, visual arts and, what am I missing?
World language.
World language.
And wellness.
Thank you, wellness. So, they'll have those, so I thought it was a great way to be cohesive, continue the expertise, expert knowledge base that they have in the middle school, they're working with those teachers, they know the content, it just made a lot of sense, if we ever decide to kinda try to get some folks at the middle school to really give up their leadership skills and want those jobs later, you know, maybe we have another conversation down the road, but this seemed like a really good model to do it. And then, working with Hugh on, you know, the classes that they might not have, how would a pad of backfill those classes with the funds that we'd approved in the budget, so, that's the process that we're gonna go through there, so excited about that. The other part of this is that those, we'll have a pre-K through four STEM coordinator, and a pre-K through four humanities coordinator, so the pre-K through four STEM will focus on science and math, major focuses on math, but also, science, when we're changing around curriculum, especially, and working with staff, and then a humanities coordinator that will do ELA and social studies, similarly, so focus on reading, literacy, but also puts some focus on social studies, too, which we've never had a social studies person at the elementary level before, so, trying to expand that. Those folks will all regularly meet together with JJ, to really work on that vertical alignment of curriculum that we're looking for, to make sure that our curriculum standards are set from pre-K all the way up, and then they'll kinda go from there, so really excited about that model. The other part of this is that I had been talking about, talking with you all about possible ways to get more oversight, as in my entry plan, as the findings were in special education, right, to make sure that we had more feet on the ground, so to speak, boots on the ground, at the individual levels. I had come to you with the idea of a possible coordinator model, where we could have three coordinators, sorry, two, one coordinator to the middle school, one at the high school, each with a team chair, and then two at the elementary level with two team chairs. After reviewing everything and trying to work out staffing for that, I couldn't do that without taking away any front-facing student staff, so I decided not to do that, and I, after discussing with the principals finally today, and all the folks, and I, the union and everyone, Hugh and Margot, and the elementary principals, we decided to go with, and Kate, Kate was a big part of this, with two assistant directors, one focused on the elementary pre-decade, and one focused on five through twelve, which aligns with the other department chairs, which is great, but, and so, they'll also have enough time in their schedule to do our ESY program, right, cover over the summer, and they'll really give significant support, really focused on the elementary needs, and then on the secondary needs. Those staffing are being shifted, Kate's current position, which is the assistant director, will just shift into one of those spots, and the science coordinator that we had open this year would shift into the other one, so it's two administrative positions going into two administrative positions, and the salaries work out evenly based on where they are. So, really excited to give Kate a model of support that can take our special ed audit, that can take the findings from what you just received, and really kinda go with it, so, I think it's gonna be a really good model, and support, a lot more support than has been in place before.
Can, I ask the question, so, pre-K to four, for the curriculum coordinators, are they gonna be teaching, or no?
They are not gonna be teaching.
Okay. And then, five through twelve, currently, they're six through twelve, what is the average for the core content areas? So, out there, core content is world language, English, history, math, science, what do they teach currently? Does it vary, or is it like up to?
The core content is anywhere right now, so they, if they're in two buildings, if they're in two buildings, they can teach no more than point four.
Okay.
If they're in.
So, two classes.
Yep, so if they're in one building, they can teach.
Point six.
Point six.
Okay.
But they're currently all in two buildings.
They're currently all in two buildings now.
Okay. And now, as five through twelve, most of them will only do point two or one class?
That's right.
Because again, out there.
Well, well, yes and no, so the, the world language, art, music, those ones will do two classes still.
Okay.
They're adding one, one teacher, essentially, so they can do that, the other ones are adding more.
Okay.
And the other ones are also learning a whole new curriculum content area at the, at the fifth grade, it's a little bit different, so they'll have, need more time to figure out, evaluate, and work with those teachers to implement the curriculum properly.
So, how many classes will they be teaching? Zero or one?
Either zero or one, I'm giving it, I'm giving it, they're still working with one of them to figure out what they wanna do, to support, most of them will be doing one class.
The high school is currently going through their schedule of making in the next three weeks, that'll determine how many courses, classes are needed from the department chairs, whether it's one or zero, that they can have that conversation.
I mean, just as a philosophy, I really like when administrators are still.
Teachers, yep. And I think they'll, I think they'll land that way, I just wanna give them the opportunity, because I, you know, yeah, I think that's where they'll land.
And to be fair, the department chairs, some of them might still wanna teach, like they don't wanna go to zero, which is actually, to your point, they have the same philosophy
And to be fair, the department chairs, some of them might still want to teach. Like, they don't want to go to zero, which is actually, to your point, they have the same philosophy you do, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, you can move too far away from the classroom if you're just straight administration all the time. Can we go back to the content, folks?
Yeah.
Well, I guess we were just on them, but can we go back to them again in terms of this? So can you help me walk through, so the decision-making was, it's really hard to find the point four to backfill.
At the middle school level, because of the way the schedule works.
Those are the teams and the.
You can fill sections at the high school a little bit easier.
Okay, so you shifted, so you shifted that. What does that then leave you to need to fill? Like, so now do you need to fill like a full middle school? Like, or that eliminates the need to have to do any point anything?
At the middle school, it eliminates the entire need. At the high school now, where we're going to be covering different classes there, that's where that need, that's where we'll fill, right, to ensure that those classes are.
And it's easier to do that.
Because there are different sections that you can fill in different ways. Yep.
Okay, so in terms of schedule adjustments, it's easier. How about in terms of people?
Yep, much easier. People-wise, that way, too.
Yeah, you got to think of the middle school, they have a teaming model, right? So these teams teach their core subjects. At the high school, I could teach ninth grade English, I could teach tenth grade A P English. And so I can, there's other ways I could fill my schedule as a one teacher, where you can't really do that at the middle school, because I'm on a team, I teach my core subject.
So it's more attractive to people, teachers who only want to teach halftime or teachers, like, I'm trying to, I'm thinking.
Just as an example, social studies, right? For example, right now, there's also internship classes being taught. That could be taught by a math teacher, right? So then you hire somebody for math to fill the point four, and maybe, and then the internship goes to that person too. So there's different ways to navigate different things.
I just want to make sure that we're not ending up, not that I think you guys would do this, but that we're ending up with a whole, like solving one problem and creating a whole.
I, yeah, I mean, we're always, we're always creating problems when we solve them, but, but this is the, this is the best, this is the best route to fill, to fill and make the difference, so.
And I know you highlighted in the memo, but I just want to reiterate for everybody, both of these plans, for people who aren't reading the memo, both of these plans result in no teacher changes.
That's correct. No teacher-facing positions are being impacted.
Budget neutral and no teacher facing positions being impacted.
I heard you loud and clear. Yep.
It's in the memo. I know, I appreciate it. I am just vocalizing it for people who can't read the memo.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
And I, there's job descriptions in here. I won't put them up here, but I, unless you want me to. They've been reviewed with our union partners, and they've been reviewed by Melissa and are ready to go if you're able to approve them tonight.
So for the department chairs, so at the high school, they're working on their schedule. And you're going to take that as the starting point to figure out what the department chairs can cover in terms of zero or one?
No, I mean, we're going to look at the department chairs, and I'm going to ask them what they want to cover. If they, if they want a class, they get a class. They're not getting two classes, though I can't, because they need to have the support of the middle school.
Right, no, I understand that part, yeah.
But as the, as the class pieces come in, right, and all the scheduling comes in, a lot of, there's a lot of shifting parts there. You know, so it may be that, you know, you need another English section. I don't know, you know what I mean? I don't know yet. So it all depends on how the class selections come out.
And then we have to post every year for the department chair position, which last year with all the transition, we were late on. And I know one of the department chairs is retiring, so are we posting this like tomorrow?
We've actually, we've already posted that particular department chair, because he's, the retirement's already in. So that's actually already in process. There was actually an interview today, I think.
Actually, I interviewed two candidates with the middle school and high school team.
Okay.
Yep. The, all the other ones will come up, so we'll do all the changes in April, and then we'll then do all the other positions at the same time, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll try to post everything simultaneously if we can.
Okay.
Yep.
And the department chair job description that we have, it hasn't been reviewed by a school committee until tonight before.
I saw the old one. It was pretty, yeah, it was like nineteen ninety-eight.
Right. It was very. So just walk us through, how much did you change it, or what did you add in? That we should really know about making this a stronger job description than it was before.
We first should change it from five to twelve.
Yeah.
Well, there it is. I wonder if I could share, well, I won't. I can share the old one some of the time. It's more like a photocopy that everybody has.
Yeah, it's a photocopy.
Yeah, I know.
So the evaluation's still there.
You don't have to go through it line by line, but were there certain things that as you were working on it, you were like, we definitely want to get this in for our department chair, because it wasn't in the one from twenty-five plus years ago?
And actually, that, the actual description wasn't that bad. It was actually really good. It just was written. It was like.
We reviewed it collectively, just to talk about things.
Okay.
Yeah, most of the language is just updated jargon, I guess you would say, more than anything.
Okay.
It was basically the same type of tasks.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I mean, we put in collaborating with other curriculum leaders pre-K to twelve to ensure vertical and horizontal curriculum alignment, right? That's a, that's a new part, I believe.
Experiences and data to inform instruction. I don't think that was in the old job description.
Okay.
It was? Well, there you go. It was. Because in nineteen ninety-eight, N M C A S. Jody wrote it when she first came into teaching.
Yep.
That's a good job description.
We modified the workdays to be appropriate, I think, because they were one hundred and ninety-two in the old one, and that's one of the things that we found. It's actually one hundred and eighty-seven. She caught me on it today at like three o'clock, four o'clock. So that was the other piece, but, and obviously, these are all aligned with what's required in the unit aid contract, and it's all laid out in there.
And then I know there's the ongoing stipend committee, and maybe some of the answers can't be answered in an open session. But in the, in the stipend, as a department chair, your stipend is based off of how many staff are under you, so does this?
How many you evaluate?
Yes, how many you evaluate in your department. Does this increase the stipend amount for?
Not the way, not the way the current stipends, not the way the current stipends work. There are conversations about, about that.
Okay, you're looking at that.
Yeah, but there are different ways to, you know, for example, the fifth grade is kind of wonky in how some of the, ELA, for example, has a writing class and a, and an English, and a reading class, right? Rather than where fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth have a reading class or ELA class and don't have both. So there's different things that we have to figure out.
Okay.
Who the primary evaluator is going to be, right? Whether it's going to be the principal, or it's going to be, you know, partially the department chair in support or not, right? So there's different things that we have to figure out to alleviate any major number of crunches that we go through. But there are conversations that we're going to have probably in a future meeting about that.
Can I ask you questions about the curriculum coordinators?
Yep.
So for STEM and humanities, under preferred, like licensed as a director supervisor, supervisor preferred but not required? That's new language, right? We didn't have that.
This is me. I put that in there. We want somebody that can be licensed to, to evaluate if we need to, right? So that's as a director. Where department chairs right now are directors. Realizing that many people at different levels don't have that licensure, DESI allows that the superintendent can determine who can evaluate and what they need to evaluate.
Okay.
So rather than having that, I didn't want to have that as a must-be, because now you're talking about multiple content areas and all these kind of things.
Right.
So a director of curriculum, right, that licensure could do that. Or director of a certain, you know, director with a specialty in a certain content area, maybe. For me, I want to make sure that folks have some kind of training, like a research for better teaching, R B T training, that actually talks about how you evaluate staff, the process that you do that, and what you go through, and the kind of feedback that you give, and to make sure it's aligned with different things. So that's what I would ask for, for these folks to get trained in, whoever those may be.
Okay, and then that goes along, I think, with number four, under duties and responsibilities, collaborate with principals and the assistant superintendent for curriculum to provide ongoing P D targeted coaching and feedback, right? Is that in alignment?
Yep.
And obviously, we have two people in the roles of coordinators right now, but they're a different job description. So what happens with these job descriptions? It gets posted, and we go through a hiring process, or what happens after we approve this?
I think I have to walk, I have to walk through that in my mind, how we, how we go through that process.
Okay.
You know, obviously, through anything in these, in these roles, I'm always going to support the folks that we have in certain positions. And so I want to make sure that I honor that for everybody that we do, so.
Okay.
Undecided, but I, that is in my mind.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion, concerns?
I was going to make a motion.
I would love it.
To approve the job descriptions as outlined in the memo.
And you all saw the assistant director one, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Second, second of mine. Joan, any other discussion before we vote?
Just if I can be difficult, that we really specify what we're approving in minutes as people read our minutes, so they know. Because even on the agenda, I believe it should have said which job descriptions we were approving, and it didn't. So if in our minutes, we can just specify which ones we are.
For the, outlined in the memo, it's the STEM and humanities coordinators pre-K to four, department chairs five through twelve, and assistant director of student services pre-K to four, and assistant director of student services five through twelve.
Thank you. Yeah, would you accept that?
Yes. I'm just a second, so.
Exactly. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just one more quick note, that we had a fantastic conversation this morning, I think, and we are closer to the specialist's schedule. Again, great thanks to Amy Worcester for putting together a schedule that seemed to work for our partners there. And we are leaning towards a modified schedule where there's three days similar to the schedule that we had proposed, and then two days where it's, it's, each specialist would stay in one school for the full day. So there's three days of travel versus two days of travel, versus five days of travel. It doesn't meet everything that we were trying to get to, but it meets most of it, and so it was a good compromise with our, with our friends there. And I'm happy we can, I think we're ready to move forward, and I think we have some good collaborative processes going forward. And we'll evaluate both styles next year, right, because we can, how it would look, and then we'll come back together and continue to work on the best specialist schedule we can, so.
All right, anything else before we move on to budget? Okay, so moving on to budget. I'll first notice that the first agenda item is not budget subcommittee, because with the passing of our budget, we didn't meet, which was so wonderful. Not that I don't love you people. It's been a really long budget season.
Did you know we meet next week, right?
I do know we meet next week, but that is the first time in between our meetings where we have not met once or twice.
Very true.
Or three times. So just, just pointing that out. So the first agenda item under budget tonight is food services contract, R F P update from Mr. Mannion.
Thank you very much. This is an update and proposed vote on the food service management company, R F P. So as you all know, we're in the third and final year of our contract for our food service management company. Norwood Schools, we manage out the management of the food service, even though the staff are Norwood employees. We put out an R F P. We have to follow the D E S E's process. So in an R F P, you have a committee, and you evaluate non-price proposals and price proposals separately. The vendors who submit, they have to submit them in separately sealed envelopes. So we had a committee of four. We had myself, we had Ms. Stewart for the school committee, we had Mr. Riley, the principal of Prescott, and we had Dr. Gallagher, the principal of the high school. And we received one proposal. It was from our current vendor, which is Chartwell's. They're a subsidiary of Compass Group, North America. So we followed the steps. We evaluated the non-price proposals. A part of that was doing an interview with them in person. We really appreciated the Chartwell's team coming out. We were sort of hybrid at the time, but we had their regional manager, a vice president, and all their in-house, the director, Eli Norris. And they were rated highly advantageous, the highly, highest ranking on the non-price proposal. They put in a very strong proposal. And then the next step after that is to evaluate the price proposal. So in this case, the price proposal is called in a guaranteed return. So it's basically the guaranteed net financial return to our food service program after you add all the revenues and you subtract the expenses, including the food service management company's management and administrative fees. So basically, the vendor is kind of on the books to return this amount that they put in the contract, each year of the contract. And the Chartwell's price proposal, their guaranteed return is four hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars returned to the program net each year. It's, they put forth a very competitive bid. I mean, we have a great relationship with Chartwell's. We have a great food service program, I would say, so this is very positive. This guaranteed return is very positive financially for the district, and they rated highly advantageous. All that being said, they would be called the most advantageous bidder. There's some wording for a vote here, and the next step is, if you vote to award this, then we will have to do a contract with them that's due to the D E S E, so we'll sign a contract, we'll work on the contract language. And then just lastly, the food service management is structured as a three-year with one year and two options to renew. So every year, we have the option to renew with them, so we'll have to get a renewal to the D E S E every June. So sometimes, like with the bus bid, it's a three-year contract, and it's just a three-year contract from start to finish. In this case, it's a one-year contract, and then we renew it each year. So based on this information, we request the school committee vote to award the three-year contract for food service management company to Chartwell's Compass Group, North America, as the most advantageous bidder.
Joan.
What's the, there's got to be a wiggle out for that guaranteed return. I'm concerned because are they projecting that based on the current funding that we get that provides almost half, right, for the free lunch that we provide to all students?
You mean the C E P, your universal free lunches, basically, the Massachusetts?
Does the contract contain a wiggle out clause, or?
Well, we haven't done the contract yet. We've awarded, we're going to award the bid, so we can go. The next step is to look at the contract. We can look at all the language in the contract before we sign it.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if they're making projections based on the current funding model, which includes a significant portion of federal funding, that that is not an accurate. And that's fine if they, I would love it if they still wanted to. I hope they're not watching, right? Am I late? From our, never mind.
If you want to talk about the contract, that has to go in executive session.
I'd like to talk about that in executive session.
If we give Sean the permission to award the contract, then we go into contract negotiation.
Yeah.
Is it a standard DESI contract, I'm curious, that they have, they have in this process?
I have to look into that, whether we have a standard contract. A lot, usually, the R F P or the bid usually becomes a lot of the contract. And we have a, you know, so I'll look at our last one. This, this is new that DESI manages it all. We're like the second year of DESI managing it. So prior to DESI doing the R F P, we all have to use their R F P now. Districts were able to just use their own R F P in contract language.
That explains a lot.
Under what authority can DESI?
Whatever they want.
Claim that food management is under their purview?
They've been doing this about two years now. It's a whole new process. It's intense. It's intense.
Yeah, but I'm asking, do you know what the rationale is that they provided for us?
Possibly, because they're providing free lunch, who knows? I don't know.
Okay, yeah.
Wrong answer.
Okay, never mind. I'd like to discuss that during contract, during executive session.
So we'll, we'll do that, and then we can, yeah, we can bring it the next, next year.
Motion to approve.
You've got to read it.
Oh, geez, somebody else. Based on this information, we request that the school, no.
Just saying, I motion to award.
I motion to award. Vote to award. No, that's not what I want. Wait, that directly contradicts what you just said, that language.
So this is the same thing that we did with the bus. So we, we need to award the, we need to award the contract, but then we go into contract negotiations. So the contract will come back to us.
Yeah, so then.
You can understand why the language, I vote to award the contract, sounds very different than.
Award the bid.
It's to award the contract for as the most advantageous bidder.
It's not the contract, it's the bid.
Is it the bid? Just make sure the language is right with us, because they're specific.
Here's what I'll motion for. I motion to move that the school committee authorizes Mr. Mannion or his designate to enter into contract negotiations with Chartwell's for. No.
Better.
As the most advantageous.
As the most advantageous.
Bidder.
Bidder.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero.
Joan, Chartwell's, give us a binder. I'm not lying. It's like this big. You want it?
No.
Is that my house?
That's the beauty of the supervisory board, is we just get to bring things up.
Because then you can see all the price proposal stuff that was in there.
And highly paid people get to figure out if we're right or not.
And I will just say that, you know, Chartwell, since I've been here, has been amazing. So I'm excited that they came in, and I'm excited we have the possibility of finalizing a contract with them on this. They've just been, they're part of the crew, you know, and they really care about the kids, and it's been an amazing experience.
Yeah. All right, great, thank you. Okay, so we'll move right to the next item. And we're going to have Mr. Mannion back again to discuss the transportation fees and registration process.
Okay, so this is a proposal on the transportation fee registration, update on the registration process. The current finance, the current transportation fee, it, it's got many levels to it. It's three hundred dollars per rider with a family cap of seven hundred and fifty, which is like two point five students. If families register before the date, we really need, we need them to register by June thirtieth in order to make our routes. As it gets after June thirtieth, people come through, they register, but they don't realize that we don't have any flexibility after June thirtieth. That we have to get the routes set. It's not like you can change a yellow bus route in September, because a bunch of people's, you know, moved where they're coming. So the current. So the current structure is we give them a $25 gift discount. So if you sign up before June 30th, it's 275. And then there are some exceptions. Right now, because of the Willett shuttle, kindergarten students pay nothing because they get shuttled. They go to their elementary school, and then they shuttle to kindergarten. And then students in grades one through six over two miles, they don't pay the fee, but they pay an administrative processing fee of $25. That's by law, K through six, if it's over two miles, they're not supposed to pay the transportation fee. And families who qualify for a financial waiver, they also still pay that processing fee, but they're, they don't pay the fee. So we're trying to make some proposals here. We're finding that not enough people are signing up early. We're not, we're not requesting to really change the amount people pay, but we want to incentivize people and in some ways, give them a late fee so that they sign up before that June 30th. Because especially with the new middle school coming in, we have to completely redo our routes. We need families to feel the incentive to sign up early, because we need people to do that in order to know where we're going. So basically, what we're proposing is that we're gonna lower the rate, the fee, to 275. And we're gonna make everyone pay this administrative processing fee. And we'll set it by the period. So if you sign up before June 30th, you pay zero processing fee.
So the actual fees go down for anybody?
For some people, for some people, it'll go down, because if you're the K through six distance, or if you're the financial waiver, you're paying zero. If you're a regular fee payer, you're still 275. Instead of being 300 minus the discount, you're just basically 275 with zero fee. After June 30th, the processing part of it goes up to 25. After August 30th, goes up to 50. And after the beginning of school, 100. New families would always pay the 20. So basically, the incentive is all carried through the administrative processing fee. And the thought there is this costs the district if you sign up late. So if you sign up after the start of school, you're gonna pay $100 processing fee on top of the fee.
The reason that we're doing that and looking at the administration fee rather than the actual transportation fee is because we really can't mess with the transportation fee with some folks, right? And we've been adding to that, but then not everybody, we can't raise that for everybody. But the administration fee, that's the cost it takes us to do the reroutes and to make sure kids get on the bus. And if somebody signs up really late, rerouting again, it actually costs funds to do that, right? So and everybody can be charged an administration fee, right? Whereas, transportation fee is limited in some cases, so.
So with kindergarten, next year, we're saying, let's keep them free, no fee at all. But we want to make sure everyone understands that in the following year, when the elementary plan goes in, Willett's gonna become a normal school. We expect that we will charge kindergarten at that point in time, okay? Because they're just gonna be traveling to their school. Grades one through six who are over two miles, again, it just is the administrative fee. They'll get zero if they sign up early, but it'll ramp up from 25 to, you know, 50 to 100. And the same will go with financial waivers. It'll start at zero, which is better for them than it is now, and then it'll ramp up. And we'll set the family cap at 2.5 times whatever the students are, which is sort of what it is now, but it will depend on your sign-up date. Lastly, I would say, we did a working group this year about financial waivers. We found that athletics, fine arts, we were all doing different waiver processes, every one of those programs. So we've developed a waiver process that's gonna go through Aspen. Families are gonna sign up once. They'll have to submit some documents, but if they can't submit documents, like for income, they can just give us a description. And the process will be managed by the business office. And once it's approved, it'll be in Aspen, only for the people who can see it. It won't be shared automatically because of, you know, sensitive information. But then suppose a family signs up for transportation at the beginning of the year, when they do athletics or fine arts, it'll already be done. So it'll simplify, we think it'll be streamlined and simpler and a little bit more easier to show that we're kind of doing a set process. So that's gonna go into effect. And all of this, ideally, so we're, we realized we need a policy subcommittee to look at this. We're not gonna vote anything tonight, because there's a policy about fee-based transportation. It's policy EEA. So there's no vote tonight. And we hope to, we really, really, the Transportation Office wants to go live on May 1st. So if we can vote this at the end of April, it would be beneficial, because they really want to start with the middle school coming onboard. They really actually want to start communications going out and everything.
Yep, so the goal is to have a policy subcommittee prior to April 30th, so we could sit down. And it's a very funny policy, and it has the actual fee itself in there. So we at least modify that or remove that, or however, just, you know what I mean, and come back with that, which is just a change on the 30th. So we'll just take one night to vote, and then at the same time, then if that works, then we can put these fees in.
So we've had a few discussions about this, and really what it comes down to is, you know, twofold. I mean, if you really have financial need, even $25 can be hard, right? So you're gonna not sign up, because maybe you don't have it, and you're waiting, and it's only gonna be 25 forever. So when you get that 25, you just, you'll sign up, maybe. So this really incentivizes people to get in, especially if they're not having to pay for transportation all anyway before that June 30th. On the flip side, because it just stays 25 forever, there is no incentive to do it before June 30th. So here, we have this climbing structure. You see, it is free before June 30th. I'd better sign up before it's 100 in September. So hopefully, this will help with getting those, those folks, because I think that's probably the bigger chunk. And then, of course, just in general, people who can afford it, or I'll just, you know, I'll get it later, I'll get it later, have no incentive at all to, but maybe 100, you know, maybe 375 speaks a little bit to even those people. So that, that's kind of where it is, you know? Sign up early and get it out of the way, and it'll be the cheapest it could possibly be before June 30th.
Seemed like a good balance to address those that need and also address those who lollygag, I guess, so to speak.
I think, I like everything about this. But I think the only thing that I do want to say is historically, the advertising hasn't been great. And so I just, every year, when we talk about this, I reiterate, the advertising has to be better, and it has to be earlier.
I mean, we weren't even digital until a couple of years ago, and that was, that was hard.
I was the superintendent of the newsletter, the first thing in my superintendent of the newsletter, we actually had more movement, but
Yeah.
to Joan's point, like, it's not enough, so.
It needs to be early and often, and
I put it like a month earlier than what we normally did, because Al said we were ready to go.
Can we put them on the buses, like, big signs?
You're joking, but I think you have whoever's getting the kids on the buses, hand them a piece of paper, give this to your mom or dad, or parent or caregiver, whoever, when you get off the bus.
Yeah.
But where we're moving from, where we're moving to a more punitive model, which I actually don't have a problem with. The only time I have a problem with it is like, I was late one year, and I was looking for it, because it got lost in, you know, there was one flyer that came home. I got stuck in my kid's binder. And so I think we found it in July.
I think we can do a mass, yeah, we can do a mass communication.
You cannot over-communicate about
I think we discovered the issue with the policy, unfortunately, and we, the vote was gonna be for tonight.
Yeah.
But then, yeah, we gotta make sure
We'll get a meeting scheduled and
We have a few other things we've got to talk about.
You don't need a motion from us.
You can't, unless you want to vote to violate your own policy.
I love doing that.
So we wanted to make sure we brought it to the, you know, committee to make sure it was discussed, in case anyone had strong feelings either way. Because this is definitely, there were, there were iterations.
There were.
Many iterations.
But I also like the idea that we're not, you know, where we can't charge transportation fees for some students, we can charge for the administrative costs that it takes if they delay in signing up.
Any other discussion on this? Great. All right, so we'll go into the final budget item. Dr. Munoz and Mr. Mannion are gonna talk to us about new district grants.
Great. I'll take some of the words away from Mr. Mannion, since he just did the last two. We are gonna here, present here, three different grants that we have received at the district, three or four? I think it's three. Ah, it's four. ST math, so we already brought to you guys ST math last year with a couple of schools. The rest of our elementary schools have opted in. We applied for all those grants. We received all those grants. So we already had budgeted for the cost of per school. We were anticipating we were gonna get those. We did. It will save us some money, because now we're, it's almost cost neutral, because we pay for another math program at the district for Renaissance Star. We're not gonna use that program anymore, because we just put the math program in its place, which is what we did at the current schools that are currently using ST math this year. The SEL 311 grant, this one was, has been a journey, but we got it. And so this is what we started to use for Coaching for Change last year, and we used it for the summer, as well as the town warrant article that we had. We were able to write it. They finally awarded us with this grant. And so we have been using it to do the following activities, you know, Coach for Change, family liaison activities. And also said, hey, if you want to opt-in for a mental health screening pilot, we'll give you more money. So I asked Dr. Luff, he said, let's do it. And so we are currently, actually, I'm with principals today to give an update. We're looking at some screeners that we can use and pilot throughout the district. We don't want to maybe give it to every student, but we're asking principals what grade levels, what groups of students do we want to give it to. We have to implement that screener before the end of May, because the requirement of the grant is that we, we take the demographic data and give it to DESI, saying, here's the kids that we did, you know, how many kids per race, how many kids were getting, all that other stuff. So that's the only stipulations of the grant. Other than that, we can get any screener we want. We're looking at the Sabres right now. It's one of the things we're looking at. It's actually a part of Renaissance. And so, and then we're just discussing, some of the high school folks and some of the school leaders, what is our plan? So if a student does self-identify and flags himself, how are we gonna give tier-two, tier-three interventions? And so
And we will obviously notify families, right, of opt-out options too, before we provide any surveys. And these are SEL, social, emotional learning screeners.
Just a reminder, we're supposed to be doing that anyway in tandem with our mental health first aid grant. That's something Jill was working on with Liz from the Health Department. So I'm pretty sure for the mental health first aid grant, we're behind it. We were supposed to have already done it a year ago, and I think it's grades one, six, and nine we're supposed to be screening.
So if we can align that somehow, we can, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, we can do this, this is, DESI says K-12, anywhere you want to pilot this, so we, if we want to go back to those grades, we want to obviously do a quick screener, so we're not having teachers burden with a long assessment, because in the younger grades, it's teacher-led assessment, I believe. Upper grades, the students do it on their own. So yeah, so we'll look at that.
Yeah, because I'm pretty sure if we don't catch up, we don't want to lose that mental health first aid grant, and we're already behind. So it seems like we should be working together.
Well, I'll reach out to Elizabeth and we'll talk. And the last portion of this grant is safety care training, so we can never have enough funds to pay people for safety care training, because it's normally either after school, or we're actually gonna try to do it during the summer, so we don't have to worry about pulling paraprofessionals or special education teachers or any teachers out of the building. So that's where we're, and then we'll find out next year if it's available again, because DESI says, this is a pilot year, and you can apply for it again next year. So if that grant's still gonna be available, we'll find out.
Who's coaching for change?
Coaching for Change is a program that we, that last year, we piloted into our elementary and middle schools, where this organization goes into colleges and recruits college students to come in and do some work, whether it's working with one, with a small group of students, just to be, just to have a mentor, so I can actually see a college kid, I'm gonna work with them one-on-one, I'm gonna work with a small group of students, or I'm gonna go at recess and help out a teacher with a recess student, and, you know, facilitate sessions with kids. So it's however the building leader utilizes that individual, but they're basically college kids, juniors and seniors in college getting ready to graduate. And for them, it's a way for them to experience school. For us, it's another adult that's actually a younger adult that can actually rate some of our kids. And so there's some successes, like for instance, at the Oldham. It's a former Oldham student. He used to be at the Oldham. And so works with a small group of kids, and apparently, it's been a positive influence for those students that have had struggles in the schools. And so, you know, we give them two or three days a week, because they have college classes, and they come in on other days. So that's what it is, yeah.
Thank you.
We have the Playful Learning Institute grant. Mr. Bullier, Dr. Bullier and Steph West had wrote this grant in conjunction, and this is a pre-K to three, or pre-K to K, it's pre-K to two, pre-K to three. I can't remember the exact grades. It's just, it's a grant for early literacy. So you can see, you read the description there. So it's basically helping us with thinking about, it's possible helping us with curriculum adoption, if that's what the grant teases out. Some of our teachers are starting to go on school visits with other schools that have success, other districts that are having, have been in this grant, to see how it is manifested in their district and how we can use it in ours. So that work is continuing right there. And then we also got the Prism grant, which can be up to five years. And so this year was the, I, Tree said email about this earlier. She saw that the governor posted, or somebody posted in the paper
Representative projects.
And we hadn't got the, it took for us to get the letter, so we haven't had the letter. So we finally got the letter. And so this year, that money is just for more stipends, because we're gonna put together a committee. They're doing a thorough, in-depth assessment of our literacy landscape in the pre-K to three level. And DESI has assigned the new teacher project, which is TNTP, to come in and do that, so they're visiting classrooms, they're doing teacher surveys, they're doing administrative surveys there. And so we, the grant is basically staying. We will give you money, but we need to determine a baseline of what you actually need versus just giving you what you want. So that's what that is. And I ask for, Mr. Mannion and I ask for your approval for this grant, these grants.
Did you do the Prism one, too?
Yeah.
So the Prism grant is $19,400 right now.
Yep.
Does that have to be used by the end of the school year?
Yes, June 30th.
And then you can reapply for up to the $100,000 annually, or how do you
So what happens is, with this $19,400, it's mostly for stipends for a committee to work, because it's after-school work.
Right.
So a committee would get together. After we do these in-depth assessments of teacher surveys, staff surveys, interviews, classroom observations, we will write a plan over the summer, and that plan will dictate how we're gonna ask for funds for DESI next.
Okay.
So that plan, I say, hey, we need more coaching support. Or, hey, we actually need to look at purchasing a curriculum for the pre-K K. And so then DESI says, you take that plan, you take that plan and you apply for the grant for the following year, and then they fund your new money based off of that fund.
So it's essentially a planning grant right now? The $19,400?
Yeah, it's exactly what it is.
Right now, it's planning, yeah.
Okay, okay. And back to Coaching for Change, where are we on that contract? Do we only have them through the school year, and/or are we looking at extending that?
We only have them through the school year. I just met with them this week.
Yeah.
And I informed them that this is obviously grant stipulated, like, we don't have money in our budget to pay for without the grant.
Yeah.
A, we need to find out from DESI if we can get the grant again.
Okay.
And then B, I actually want to follow up with principals, make sure that it is a successful program, because I am hearing success, but I want to make sure that principals are saying, yes, we actually want that program back. Because I don't want to give them that they may just tie their hands, they're like, I don't know what else to do.
Yeah. The Student Services Review, Audit, Comprehensive Review, whatever, we're calling it, did they look into Coaching for Change at all?
I, nothing that were in the interview questions or the, or the protocols that they I, nothing that were in the interview questions or the, or the protocols that they put in front of me had Coaching and Change and Coaching for Change in there at all. It doesn't mean that when they did their focus groups and their interviews, it didn't come out.
Because I know like when I did my interview, one of the questions was around, do you think there's enough, I mean, not verbatim, but in essence, do you think there's enough social emotional learning and mental health support in the elementary? So that kind of aligns with that question. So it might have come up in their process.
Yep. I don't know, I haven't had, I've seen the kind of pre-report.
Okay.
Prior to the interviews and their post reports. They're almost, they're almost through, actually. I think they're going to be interviewing the final principals this week.
Yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow's the final interview.
Yep.
Okay. And JJ, I know it's in writing, but that math grant is always a little weird because
It is.
we don't really receive the four hundred thousand dollars.
Nope.
We pay them three thousand five hundred to get.
It's like we're getting a discounted.
Yeah.
Um, product. So Desi's saying, we will cover the rest.
Yeah.
Or the one day foundation, whoever gives us a grant, we'll cover the rest. We just need you to cover thirty five hundred per school. So that's what it's worth if we were to, if we didn't have this grant and we went to do it on our own.
And that thirty five hundred dollars is allocated within?
Yeah. Laura Donnelly already put it in her budget before, so it's been in the budget that's been approved.
So it's in the budget that's been approved to add to all of the elementary schools at three thousand five hundred per school?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the grant?
Motion to approve new district grants, is that what?
Moved by David, seconded by Judith, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the pass four to zero with one absent.
Madam Chair, if I may just, the playful learning grant just reminded me and I just want to let folks know that if you haven't looked outside recently, there's a brand new playground going in at the LMPA. And I think the news, we're actually here today, working with Principal Noonan and Matt Brown kind of sharing. So that could be something on the news tonight, but it's really exciting out there, the grant that we had to, to build that playground. So it's on its way.
Can I ask a grant question and you can come back to us with the information? Just with planning grants, it kind of triggered my mind. So the pathway grants at the high school. Started with a planning grant a number of years ago, then we have, I think, two or three pathways now. But I don't think we've gotten an update lately on where we are with the grant funding from Desi. But I think from what I've seen online, maybe we get less than they told us we would. So if we could look into that and get back to us. Yeah, the innovation pathways, yeah.
Absolutely.
And we can put it on our, our budget subcommittee agenda for meeting that Anne Marie can't wait to have.
We have a budget subcommittee.
Wait to have more budget.
What is it, what is it that you want to not create this?
Just the amount of the pathways grants that we're getting from Desi right now.
I believe we just started the second and third pathway. So we're doing business and we're doing green.
Green energy, yeah, we started with healthcare.
Previously we had healthcare, so now we're doing three.
I know he would mention that to us in our, in our budget meetings, we were planning the budget. So I'm feeling pretty confident that we have funds there. The question is, is there any grant money?
And if one of them got fifty thousand dollars, might have seen that as one of those.
Yeah, because it was supposed to be like fifty to seventy five per pathway. I'm pretty sure they scaled back, so if we can have an update.
And before we move out of budget, I did get a text message earlier today from Representative Rogers about the House's deliberations on. Well, yes. And the House did pass and send on to the Senate a bill with fifty eight million dollars in supplemental spending for sped circuit breaker, a hundred and ninety million dollar reserve to reimburse school districts for costs incurred during this fiscal year, two hundred and fifty thousand for the inspector general to investigate transportation costs. And sped, total sped circuit breaker for February twenty five, five hundred and fifty one million.
That's the supplemental budget, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep, so that was engrossed by the House and sent to the Senate.
The House put it down? I didn't see it on the chair sheet.
I don't, I'd have to look. I will, once, once these go through, I'll get more of an update. Hopefully I can have something everybody's up to a little more detail on what that means.
But I just wanted, that was hot, hot off the presses this evening and that just our representatives are definitely pushing for supplemental, further supplemental funding for us. And our, all the other districts as well, but yeah. All right, so we will move on to the next item. Actually, so our next item was legislative advocacy, have we covered that sufficiently, Ms. Stewart?
Yeah, unless, I mean, so you just gave an update and, and Mr. Luff read two letters. Is there anything at this time that the committee wants us to continue looking into?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so then the next item is policy and Dr. Giblin stepped out of the room. But Mr. Luff, would you want to handle that?
Just that we haven't met, but we have to schedule a meeting to discuss a few things now. Obviously the policy regarding fees. And possibly the conversations about the policy, I think it was, I removed this one, the attendance policy, the attendance area policy. So we'll take a look at that too. So we'll probably meet next week or the week after.
Sure.
Or, yeah, we'll figure that out before April thirtieth.
Before, thank you. Come look at our calendars before we leave tonight.
Yep.
Joan doesn't know she's agreeing to that.
She just did.
Okay, so then we just, we'll jump to the next one. Ms. Stewart, you're going to talk about the School Health Council update and wellness policy.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick update and have a brief discussion. So I've got some notes in our packet. We last met as a school health council last week on April first. We are planning our second annual wellness fair for November eighth, twenty twenty five, from ten to two. So save that date. Last year's was a great start and we can't wait to grow it even more. What I wanted to talk mostly about tonight with the group in accordance with our wellness policy is around the membership of the School Health Council and then also the monitoring and evaluation that is supposed to be occurring. So I copied the wellness policy in my notes, so you can have it. I highlighted the sections that are relevant to this discussion. But we, so currently our wellness, our School Health Council, as you know, the head of it is Ryan Quigley, who is our wellness chair, and he's doing a wonderful job. And I have been on it since two thousand seventeen. Kate was on it with me as well. So that's one thing we could talk about tonight if somebody else wants to, to join me as a school committee representative. We do a really great job with community partnerships over the last couple of years. So members from Impact Norwood come to the School Health Council. Two members from the library are often a part of it. The Mind Matters, the Mental Health First Aid Grant people are part of it. Don't have strong enough, in my opinion, consistent involvement of other teachers and of students. We actually do not have a student representative. And by law and by policy, we are supposed to have student representation. I am in talks with Mr. Luff and Dr. Gallian and Mr. Quigley about how we may go about some student initiatives. But because I can never say no, I did agree last week to lead the initiative to get more members from our community and working with Mr. Luff on getting more teachers. So over the course of the last eight years, we, we have had some representatives from nursing, from the, the different nursing staff on it, but currently we don't have anybody who regularly comes. It would be great if we could get one of the nurses. Amy Worcester is on it from the elementary level and she does a fabulous job. But I think it would be amazing if we could have even more elementary voices. In the community, the work of Impact Norwood by that grant is very specifically secondary. But the School Health Council is supposed to be K through twelve, pre K through twelve. So I just want to make sure with the initiatives of the School Health Council that we are focused on all ages. And then we also are just talking about how do we get more parents involved? So as a school health council, we meet sometimes every other month. It's usually on Tuesdays. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, June third, three thirty to four thirty. We've been doing it remotely just because it works best for the current members. If anybody wants to join and just see what it's all about and come to that meeting, you can definitely email me or email Mr. Luff or email Mr. Quigley and we can get you the link. But I am going to be working on the course of this month, some letters with Mr. Luff that we can get out through the PTOs, try to get more community members. And then also, Mr. Luff, I didn't tell you this one yet, but we were also talking about how to strengthen the partnership with the Town Wellness Committee. And I know it's just starting and there's some partnership there, but we were thinking there should be more crossover between the townwide wellness committee and the School Health Council. So on membership, because it is in the policy, I just wanted to get any feedback. If there is anything additional to what I just said, that you think we should be doing or any other groups that you would like me to work on reaching out to? And then the other part is the evaluation. So this wellness policy does call out, as you can see, that we, via our superintendent, are supposed to be getting a developed summary report every two years on district wide compliance with our wellness policy.
Can I ask how often the last time that happened was?
Well, I was just going to say, you're so lucky, Tim, because it's never happened. No, no, and I think you're the man to make it happen.
Just add that to the list here.
What, what we have gotten better at is having Mr. Quigley come and, and talk to us and give presentations. That has definitely been, excuse me, very impactful. And what we've also gotten better at is having reports on the Metro West data. But we've never had a full, and I don't envision this to happen this school year, but just as the School Health Council, we were starting to talk about what should that evaluation and monitoring look like going forward? And since it is in our policy, I wanted to make sure I brought it back to the attention of the school.
Can we modify that to be the superintendent of schools or designate? Just kidding.
So some of this is based on law, so I don't think we're allowed to entirely because they're.
Have we been breaking the law for years here?
No, this is our policy. I'm ha, I'm happy to have a review of the wellness policy and bring that back to you. It's an important policy. It's, it's, you know, we modify the policy regularly and it's not, that's.
So I think the way I'm reading this, and tell me if I'm wrong, but like, it's, it's the school committee and the superintendent working with the School Health Council, because if you scroll down more, like the school council shall make efforts too. There's a bunch of things. And then the criteria of what is supposed to be monitored, it, it's all there on page three, numbers one through three. So I think we can use the School Health Council like as the vehicle to get it done. I don't think it has to be completely under you. Since we were talking about it on the School Health Council and because it is in our policy, I wanted to bring it back here if anybody had any direction that you'd like me to take back from the council.
Well, if it's a policy issue, we should table it to the policy subcommittee. Make that, make those recommendations and then bring it back here, right?
Yeah, we, we definitely can, yeah. I, I just, I had wanted to update on the School Health Council meeting and then Mr. Luff put it under policy, so.
Well, just because you, it was meant as about policy. So the wellness policy itself is reviewed every two years, right?
Supposedly, yes.
It's supposed to be. So that goes in conjunction, so you do the wellness policy, two years, two years implementation. We review how it's working in all those pieces. And then we go back to the policy subcommittee to update that, right? And the School Health Council typically will update the policy with recommendations and then send it to us, kind of a deal. So I think that's probably the cycle, if that makes sense.
And we're not too, too much out of compliance there because we last reviewed it in September of twenty two. So we're like at the two and a half year mark. And as Joan knows, because we were on policy subcommittee together at the time, we had did a lot of work during the audit on this. It was just more the, the implementation and the monitoring piece. We haven't figured that part out yet. But does anybody want to join me on the School Health Council?
I think you're doing a stellar job.
It's like, notice my hands are stashed out, I have really too many. Okay, I can continue, but let me know, I, I don't want to step off of it. I just, as most of you know, hesitate to be the only school committee member committed to things, but I will continue to go.
Don't worry, we'll grow up Judith and eventually to something.
You have some time.
No, 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 this is not a pressure situation. This is a, this is a, eventually it will happen. I was like, that was not meant to pressure you, I'm sorry.
But anybody is welcome to join. Like you don't have to officially say yes to want to be on this School Council. If anybody would like to be part of our meeting on June third.
And it certainly doesn't have to be here, it can be anytime after the fact. We do not have to vote on that in a public meeting, fortunately. Okay, anything else under policy before we move on? Great, so that brings us to new business and we have just one item left under new business, which is the superintendent goal setting discussion. Ms. Stewart, do you want to start that?
I can get us started on that. Also put some notes in our packet.
I also, Ms. Stewart, popped a little memo that I created today in there too, just so you know.
Oh, okay. You didn't tell me that one.
No, no, it's just, it's, now you, you start. It's, it's kind of what we discussed last night, kind of the idea, what I'm thinking and why.
Is the memo attached to mine or separate somewhere else in the package?
It's separate, it's in the, yeah.
Okay. So I'll start and then we will hand it over to Mr. Luff. So Mr. Luff and I met yesterday to begin the discussion around goals and the process that we will follow for twenty five to twenty six. I had gone into the meeting proposing a timeline that has been similar to what we've been doing since twenty nineteen, which was starting a goal cycle now and then going until March that way. Just like we did, the evaluation process was done before the election cycle. So one of the links in your packet, if you go to procedural steps worksheet, option one, that is the timeline that I had put together to discuss with Tim yesterday. And then in the meeting, as we were looking at that, he also proposed a second option, which is option number two in our packet. That would shift it a little bit. So on option one, just broadly, we can, you know, go into detail as we discuss. This again will be a goal cycle of April twenty five through March twenty six. Some of you may remember, we've seen this worksheet before. It's a template that came from M A S C, but I have edited it a little bit and made it more Noridian because we've, we've done things a little bit different over the years. So in option one, you know, we could tonight approve the procedural steps and the timeline and then come back on April thirtieth or May fourteenth to really approve all of the goals, focus indicators and evidence. We could have the formative in the fall, in October. And then again, that would put us back at next March, doing what we just got done doing. If you look at option two, what Tim was proposing and we want to discuss tonight is shifting it and, and being in more alignment with how principals and directors and, and teachers are evaluated and doing more of a fiscal year, school year, start in July through June. So if we did this one halfway down page one is where the timeline starts to change, where we wouldn't be approving goals, indicators and evidence until end of May, early June. The formative would then become December. But then we would not be doing the evaluation until post-election. So that is something I want us to really think about and talk about tonight. As we think of these two options, if you go back to my main notes, just other things I compiled, because I know this process can be tedious and burdensome. And Judith, you haven't yet had the fun to, to join us. So I just wanted to put all the resources together for us. We have the Desi material from twenty nineteen, we have the rubric. We have Superintendent Luff's contract that we need to keep in mind with some language in there around the three sixty and the evaluation. There is a five step cycle, as we all know. And it's the first two steps that I think tonight we need a little bit more direction on what is that timeline going to look like? When do we expect Mr. Luff's superintendent self-assessment? Because that goes into designing the goals. And when are we expecting doing the analysis, goal setting and plan development? Steps three to five, we do not have to finalize tonight, that is as you go throughout the year. And then just as a reminder to all of us, what we would be looking to do is one professional practice goal, one student learning goal, two to four district improvement goals. And then under the umbrella of those goals is six to eight indicators that align to the goals. Just have notes here, I don't have to go through it all. But also at the bottom of my notes for you, Tim and I did start to talk yesterday, just broadly of like what goal areas could be. And I think Mr. Luff, I captured this correctly, but we were talking about strategic planning, budget, the implementation of the recommendations from the Student Services Review, safety. Obviously, safety has been a big topic from his entry findings. And then the PLC implementation model.
Yeah, really, that's curriculum vertical alignment, curriculum alignment with PLCs that would be included. And obviously more than just the Student Service Review, but special ed student services in general. We have a overarching goal there.
So I'm going to ask Tim, if you want to share your memo and talk a little bit more about why you are proposing that we think about a different timeline?
So I tried to put this in a memo today and I apologize it's late. I got this done, I think finally when I had time, this afternoon, this evening, like five or six. So this is a quick memo. You know, I've been thinking a lot about the cycle, you know, and it was clear that last, last time we were here it was really difficult to evaluate me on the completion of the goals because they're still in process, right? And so we had met goals, set, set goals that were to substantial completion, knowing that the regular cycle of a school district goes through June really. And trying to figure out whether I can meet those goals or not when I give you the evidence on March fourth is a hard thing to do. So, and again, that would continue also, right? Because next year the goals would go to the same point and we'd be evaluating goals that are there. At the same time, I'm still working on these current goals for this year and I would be adding new ones to start with in the next three months. So I'd overlap on goals that are, that are working. Not that I'm not working all of it anyway, but just focusing on new goals and I'm trying to close out the current year is an interesting thing. So I provided part of a memo from the, from mask in two thousand nineteen that they, with their superintendent evaluation process. And many districts now are adjusting the cycle to fit with the goal setting and planning that occurs with the rest of the district. And that's to make sure that I'm evaluated at the end of the school year with planning occurring over the summer goals and set no later than early fall. They do go on and talk about how some committees may tie into the municipal elections, as you do now. The benefits to that obviously are, you know, the people who set the goals for me are the ones who are evaluating me, right? And that's kind of how we did that this year and that makes a lot of sense and I totally understand that part. There are ways from the memo that if you decided not to do that, that you could choose to, before somebody leaves office, for example, or leaves the seat, if they do leave, they could still partake in the assessment by providing information for the composite. And the new person coming on who might not know me in time could decide whether or not they feel like they could evaluate or not. So previous members and new members could, I could have seven people evaluating possibly in a, in a course of a, of a jump, which would be fine too. So the reason I'm really sharing this is because in a perfect world, the work of the district, I think, should be fluid. And I have a chart, I tried to make a little bubble chart, so it's easier to, to do that and show you. We really should start, and I really would love to start by setting our strategic initiatives first, right? So the entire district is set up, so here's what we are looking at doing for the year. Then follow through on goal setting. So our goal setting, my goal setting, your goal setting and what those objectives are. School improvement planning, right? So working with the principals, set their goals and the school improvement planning from the school should align with the strategic objectives. I will note that those currently happen, are scheduled for May, which is well before we're actually going to have our initiatives kind of in play and our goal set. And then obviously we do a, a significant amount of data analysis through the year. That helps us with our formatives, it helps us with our summatives. And then we repeat that cycle, right, in the following years. From that data set, at the end of the year, we then create our new strategic initiatives and then go from there. I view this first year. I view this first year, because we haven't had a chance to do the summative piece, as my report of entry findings. So next year will be a little bit different, but you can see a fun little chart here. If you like that, I made a little chart. Strategic initiatives will be the first thing that should be developed. So everything is focused on that district umbrella, on what we want to do as a district. And that's all based on the data that we reviewed. I have that in May or June, right? So we're sitting together with the team and having conversations about what those things should be. June, July, the goal setting for the superintendent, and then the school committee could align their goals the same way at the same time. In September, I'm doing goal setting with the principals and administrators, again, based on what the strategic initiatives are and what the, what our goals are. Then even the school improvement plans can be developed from there in September and presented to you. Right now, again, it's in May. They have not yet, by the way, voted on any of their, any of their school improvement plans. So there is time to make this change if we wanted to do it and allow for two-year plans to be in place in September for you, based on this model. I did check on it this morning. In January, February, we sit down and we do formatives in mid-years for everybody, right? So I'm having conversations about, you know, with, with all of my staff anyway right now, about where they are with their goals, what assistance they need, the data they're using. We could do that. I saw yours was in January, I think, maybe, maybe December, Teresa, which is fine, too. Just as long as kind of along this line, this timeframe. In May is the part that I really want to focus on. And you heard Lori today talk about the institutional self-evaluation that we're, that we're working on. This I've done with Dusty before in that process, where we actually have a state of the union with all the principals, where we provide them with the data that we want to say if we've met those objectives or not, right? And it comes down to whether it's achievement data or it's behavioral data, social, emotional, it's accessibility data, all those pieces. And we align that and we get that from them, and that helps us understand, and using Mustang, Mustang metrics, too, would help us with that, understand where we are in our goals and then where we want to make recommendations for the next year to move forward on. That then, I would then evaluate our folks, you'd evaluate me in May and June, right? And then we would take, take that data, take that recommendation, and that would then feed into the new strategic initiatives for the year, right? So it's just this continuous cycle of institutional self-evaluation, so to speak. And then obviously, so those are the big things. Those are the, that's the, that's the kind of draw for me in a school, the district year kind of model for this. I understand, I think, some of the reservations of why you may want to stick with, with March, right? You want to evaluate me and make sure you know what you're going to do before you give me that next contract, right? And all those kinds of things, and I totally get that. I would hope that this process, along with the 360, if we keep it, would keep that information flowing to you, where I could share that mid-year state of the union with you, that post-year state of the union with you, too. So you always have that information in a continuous cycle. But that's kind of how I view it. I just feel like it's all over the place right now. And I'm setting my goals before we've set our initiatives for the year, so.
So when Tim and I were talking yesterday, like, I definitely understand this rationale. And I think like the alignment of everything else, I'm totally on board with. I'm even fine with like your goal starting end of June and July. I still feel really strongly our evaluation needs to be before the election cycle. So the only sitting committee member who did it the way that it's being proposed to change to, and there was a reason as a committee, we changed it to the election cycle. So in 17 and 18.
Technically, I did it, too, but it wasn't.
No, not this way.
Well, I came in two months after. I mean, so because of my.
Well, that got weird because of COVID.
Of course, but I'm just saying I've actually, I've lived this as well, like with having.
Well, no, 2019 was the first year that we shifted it, that the evaluation was done in March.
Right. What I'm saying is, I'm also a committee member who came in and had to evaluate a superintendent that I'd only known for two months.
No, for sure. But I'm saying that's going to get, that's going to get harder if we go back to this.
But doesn't that get canceled out because you need three anyway and you have to? Like, this process is just so convoluted and it just, it drives me nuts and it's just like on full display here. And it, it's not a knock against your work. It just, it drives me nuts. My argument would be, I hear what you're saying, but where we have to calibrate ours anyway, like even if yours was way off or you have someone that's like checked out, be like getting off or just on and sort of just fills it out, like, I think the process sort of covers that because you're going to need three anyway, right?
Yeah, in my, in my particular case, I was given the option to opt out because I'd only been in for two months because we hadn't been doing it. I think I chose to do it, but because I was basically told a two to two would be really bad. So I did do it, but that was, that was difficult, yeah.
But that's also a reality of the work that we do, that sometimes you're going to have a committee, and I know, you know, I'm not advocating to go back to that place, but sometimes those, like, things happen. And I think that you can't always prepare for it. And as we've gone through this and we're in the first year of a new superintendent, like, I, my inkling would be, or my, what I'm leaning towards, we lean towards what Tim wants to do. I mean, I think what's great is if we can, if we get there and we get into a second contract where you do this over two years, I think that makes it much better, right? And I think that that makes it a lot easier because things are spread out. And, you know, in year two of the cycle, you're not doing step one and two because that's already done and you're just sort of like revisiting it. But that's, I guess, I mean, I'll do what the board wants, but that's, that's where I land.
I like the idea of somehow creating a way for the person, if, if we move the cycle, that the, if somebody is stepping off, that they have the opportunity to participate. I don't know what exactly that would look like, but I do think that addresses to some extent your concern. There'd be a balance there. The only time that would be a problem, like, we, we're a two-two-one, right?
Yeah, so now, sure.
So is there one year that we'd end up with an even number or two years? It's too late for me to do now.
So a year from now, Emory and I are up, and then a year from now is David.
So it could be.
So it's just the year where there's a one, where there's a one?
Yeah, it could be two, two, three, so the, that'd be an odd number. Because if we were stepping off and wanted to do it and then two new people came in, that's another two. And yeah, so that'd be then plus three.
So I talked with Melissa Murray, our attorney, a little bit about this today. So as we figure out the timeline, we don't have to figure everything out today, but then I would encourage us to come back on the 30th and figure out what we're expecting because part of what we need to figure out upfront is who does the evaluation. So if we're shifting this to off the election cycle, then we will need upfront, so Tim knows and we all know, who is going to be completing an individual evaluation. So if one to two of us are not on the committee, we could still fill that out, but we have no voting power. So then the voting power becomes the five members around the table. And then also, if we were asked to complete it before we step off.
It would be incomplete.
We won't have all the evidence, the goal, it will be off-cycle. Additionally, Melissa has to look into what then happens with our feedback because we're not, we would no longer be elected officials. So does it even go into the composite? Or is it more like the 360 where it's referenced? She was going to look into that for me.
But if you complete, I would think.
If you completed as an elected official.
Yep. But like when you were on it, I would think everything before you step off would count.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be the same form that you were completing them in June?
Why not?
So we're going to make more work for ourselves?
No, we just make it earlier. I mean, those forms could be made now for, if we made goals today, those forms really could be made now.
Yeah.
But then you, you could potentially have people assessing at different points of the goals. That's not a fair system.
No, you do, but it's because you know that the people, you know that you've got one group of people who's going to have the view of 70% and one group of people that's only going to have the 30% view. So together, they make 100%. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, I just, I mean, I'll go, I, I am like, not to be stubborn, I am 100% against, I've been thinking about this, changing our cycle. I, I think that the superintendent and school committee relationship is very, very different. I, I love everything else about this except for when we evaluate. And I know this past year was really hard. I mean, for all of us, there was a lot of transition. There was a lot of catch-up and move forward at the same time. But we also didn't really give ourselves or Tim, if even what we're talking about tonight. We basically didn't set your goals until October.
But the, I mean, as, as somebody who evaluates, that's what you do. Like, I, I have teachers that I evaluate that their goals are due mid-October, and we have even worse deadlines, and like, I have to complete their summative evaluation by a week from Friday. So you talk about, I mean, some of them have jumped into goals that are in year two of two. Some of them are doing a one-year plan. So like, again, back to my piece, like, the system sucks. It's not good. I feel strongly about that. And I also think if we're trying to support the person that's in the position, you know, I know we, I hear what you're saying, but this is where I think we differ a little bit, is I would want to back support what Tim wants to make sure that he's successful and he feels successful.
So another point to consider, that may have to then go into executive session, I am not sure. According to Tim's contract, next July, we are discussing contract negotiations. I have concerns of if we are aligning an evaluation and goal setting at the exact same time, that we would be re-entering into negotiations. I, I do not think that is a smart or efficient model for any of us, Tim or the school committee.
Wait, you're concerned about that this one time or you're concerned about that this will become a longstanding process?
No, I'm concerned about specifically for this cycle. And I think that at that cycle, you could potentially talk about changing the cycle going forward, but for this specific cycle, I have concerns.
So then, if there are contractual concerns, I think we need to move this discussion to executive session?
Yes. But before we do that, because I want to try to exhaust everything we can that does not include executive session before going into that. Another point to consider, I've actually considered this quite a lot and whether, and I, I like that it aligns. I've always kind of really hated that we've done the, the evaluation, well, as many as I've done, because it's been really weird, as early as we do, because it does feel very disjointed with, with the, with the commit, with the district schools. And things are, you know, and we had to remind people even just this past time, you know, no, it's not partially met because it's supposed to be substantial progress towards. So it is, that is met. I would say I'd be in more favor of this if, you know, the whole stepping off committee members were required to do the evaluation up to that point, not optional, because then it just gives people, and I, I think that's what, that's what happened, at least when I came on, because it was a COVID year and very strange, and the previous committee member was given the option and did not want to complete the evaluation, so I had to almost. I think that that is, you know, should be an obligation before stepping off that, you know, if we were to move this, that you'll fill out your valuation up to that date, just so that there's that consistency and bridging for the new members.
We can say that, but what are you going to do to the person who's stepping off? Knock their pay?
Well, no, but.
If they don't do it?
But if it was, if it was due before an election, like, you would expect that a person who is still in the seat should be doing the job. I guess you can't really make someone do anything. I mean, I can just walk, get up right now and walk right out, but I haven't yet.
Yeah, I would, I, I mean, for folks who, for folks who are up for election and are, and are running, there's an incentive, right? Which is, you're running, so.
This is true. This is true. Someone's like truly stepping off.
If someone is truly stepping off, yeah, that's what I meant, is somebody who's decided not to run again could make the decision. We can make it part of our protocols. I'm just saying, like.
And you would hope that people.
Yeah, just be aware of that. It has no teeth.
Yeah, I think that so far, I think I've just been, you know, disillusioned by the wonderful people I've actually been on the committee with so far would, would probably do it. I can't speak to the future, but.
That's because you did not live through the committee and which a member refused to do it.
Do you want, I can give you all that opportunity if you'd like.
No, I'm just saying, I, I, I have a little bit of a different experience on a different cycle for two years before anybody else around the table was, was part of it.
No, I remember that discussion. Okay, so what? Do we need to go into executive session to continue this conversation to get to the vote that we need tonight, or?
I mean, in, in executive session, obviously, some discussion can happen and then we could always work on the timeline more for April 30th. But what I would like a little bit more feedback on, so we can continue the work, is those broad goal areas, which, Tim, I know you wanted to bring back on the 30th, strategic initiatives, right? Is that the terminology you're using?
Yeah, I'm going to try to bring strategic initiatives back based on these overarching big rocks, so to speak, that I'll work on and the goal that I'm hoping that we'll work on as a district. And I'm hoping that's what we'll really focus on next year and, you know, and, and collect the data on at the end of the year so we know where we hit. It, you know, won't be done, right, by, by March. So I was just going to say that.
Yeah, no, of course, of course. But do people in general agree, like, areas to be looking at? Is the strategic planning, the budget, student services audit, safety, and then vertical and horizontal alignment of the curriculum? Are there areas that you feel you want us to look into as well?
I'm confused as when you're saying areas you want us to look into, to, to what purpose?
For goals.
Are you working on like goals?
Yes, like previous year's community engagement or, you know.
The middle school build.
There's this ongoing, they're going to.
I know, but I'm just saying, like. It's part of the reason that I want to focus on these things after I kind of close out those really big things that we have to close out for this year. You know, we have a school to build and open up and.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we have a history of ignoring all of the work that we have to do and then setting some new goals, and I just don't agree with that. We should, our goals should be the things that we're doing. Like, we set goals and didn't include the middle school building process about two or three years ago, even though we were in the middle school building process and it required a ton of work, so.
And you're talking about like in general, like the strategic plan?
Yes, the strategic plan.
But this is more for superintendent goals specifically.
The superintendent goal should be the strategic goals of the district.
Well, but in the Dusty, so they're, so they're supposed to be tied to but separate. And that's something else that we, we need to talk about. So superintendent goals are supposed to be the individual goals of the superintendent. And they should absolutely align, but the district goals are different. If it was all the same thing, then we would not have to.
Superintendent goals should be what he's going to do to make those strategic things happen.
And as are the principal goals, as are the school improvement plans, right, all based on the strategic initiatives. Everyone has a professional practice goal, right? So something that I'm doing for my professional practice to get there. Obviously, some specific things on the budget. It's my work and my reorganization of the special ed department and making sure that those things are in place, right? It's my making sure that, you know, team leaders and PLC leaders are trained on how to facilitate those kind of, all those kind of things. But again, you know, we can do these now, but I'm probably not going to kick these things off, right? Until, until I'm done with the current goals, so.
And Tim and I did talk yesterday about those current goals, like coming back with some type of end of the year report to us, right? Like, where, from what we just evaluated you on until June, like in June, giving us like a closeout?
Yeah, I thought that was if we were going to move my cycle.
But this is why I keep asking, too, when are we getting updates on strategic, the strategic plan? And, and why I've been asking since September, are we sure? May is the right time for the school improvement plans? Like, I've kind of seen all this coming.
But I think, I mean, I think for, like, through your superintendent updates, you can do that. Like, give us updates on, on things that have happened. And just the one thing I would say, and, and I know that I, I get knocked for, like, trying to be a minimalist, but this is why, it's like, when it gives you a minimum, you should choose the minimum number because there's so much involved here. So like when it says if it's four to six strands, do four. And it's not trying to take the easy way out, it's just there's so much of it. And I think we do so much that we put ourselves in this position where we spin.
I just think, yeah, I think if it's aligned with the work that we're doing, it just makes so much more sense altogether. And I understand what you're saying with the evaluation process and where that connects. But like, I really want you to evaluate me on when I'm done with the middle school project, right? And that's done, and when we're, we're done with those pieces. I mean, the redistricting piece, obviously, we're not there yet, but that was probably the closest thing to conclusion, right? That, that I had in the goals last year. I'm not done with this yet, right? So there are all these things that I'd just like to be evaluated based on the work that I complete. And these things that I'll share with you next time, if they're goals, they're not going to be met by the time you evaluate me and I give you the data in March, so.
Which I said to you yesterday, I totally get because I'm designed that way, too. We are cut from the same cloth. But that is not the way this cycle is set up. I mean, even in the Dusty stuff, it says you can have multi-year goals. You just have to be very clear. And this is also why I always harp on us on our SMART goals, because if it's not going to be done, and a lot of it isn't, that's why we have to be specific and measurable in the timeline so we know very clearly what are we expecting to be done by X date. And if you look back at previous superintendent goals in the district and you look back at school committee goals in the district, we have accomplished so many things over the course of years. But if we didn't have them as goals and we didn't evaluate them, I'm not sure we would have gotten them done. Like, the middle school project was a goal for the school committee and Dr. Thompson, year after year after year, from 2017 until last year. So the nature of public education, which I struggle with, is you're never really done. And just when you think you finally achieve something, the cycle apparently starts all over, like the budget.
No, and I want goals. I definitely want them. I mean, I'm not saying, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying you don't.
You're advocating for no goals.
I just want to, I just want to make it align with the actual work that we're doing in the district. That's all. That's all.
All right, so I'm going to suggest that we table this discussion until we have an executive session. All right, so I'm going to suggest that we table this discussion until we have an executive session discussion about the implications to the contract, and then we can revisit this at the April 30th meeting with an actual vote on timeline.
And I will bring back, at least, the strategic initiatives, anyway, right, in detail. I would need guidance on, am I doing a self-assessment right now, and all those things for April 30th? Just, you know, afterwards? So I would want that prepared, and, again, my self-assessment on these things, I guess, could be my, my report of entry findings, too, if you know, but that's, that's one, one part of it. I would really love the opportunity, at the end of each year, to sit with the administration and talk about the data that we've collected for the year, to do that self-assessment. You know, know where we actually are in the district before we kick off, so.
I'm just curious how many districts, I mean, school committees align with the school year? Like, what percent? That could be a persuasive argument that you could bring back.
Nobody really has that data, I've asked, I've asked MASC, and I've asked our attorney, and everybody is just like, eh, I don't think people do both.
I could ask, if you want, fellow superintendents.
Yeah.
Just get a little.
I'd be kind of curious.
Yeah.
Always think that.
Yeah, it's true. But we all have different election cycles, too, which is kind of.
Which is bizarre, yeah. Well, that's another thing really challenging in Norwood, a lot of school committees, you don't get elected on the Monday and start on a Wednesday. There's like, a month or two before there's a transition, so you can also plan and wrap up. Our, our charter in this town doesn't allow us to do that.
Year of the minute the election is over, you're off, and the next is on.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll call that tabled until the next meeting, we'll discuss that in executive session.
Emery, in executive session, will there be further direction, though? Like, I don't, I don't want there to be no further work between Tim and I between, until April 30th? Like, I want us to be able to bring something back on April 30th?
I think we can do that, based on the.
Based on the executive session session?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
All right, so the next item was consent agenda, but I don't think we have any donations?
No, we do not.
So we actually already covered that with the declaration of surplus. So that actually brings us to school committee addenda. Teresa, do you have anything this evening?
I do not, other than enjoy April break, because we will not be back as a committee until after that. And welcome Judith to our meeting.
Thank you so much. Judith, do you have anything this evening?
I didn't know it would go this long. Wish I had had a little bit more caffeine. Starting to feel pretty tired. And I'm enjoying the conversation and the people. And, yeah. Nothing else to add. Keep it moving.
Joan, do you have anything this evening?
Uh, I have nothing, other than welcome.
Thank you.
David?
No.
David doesn't even welcome you.
Yeah. David's a man of few words, it's, it's kind of great. Also, I also welcome you, Judith. Great to have you here, congratulations on the election. Yeah, that's, I'll keep it really short, so we can get, get moving. Okay, everybody enjoy their April vacation, come back rested and ready to go, we'll see you on April 30th. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our regular session, but we do need to go into executive session to conduct strategy session, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, Unit A and Unit 50, it does say Unit B, but that is no longer necessary. And to also conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with the non-union personnel, i.e. superintendent. I do need a motion to go in.
We'll make a motion to.
We will, we will only reconvene for the purpose of adjournment.
Oh, nice.
Now I need a motion to go into executive session.
I will make a motion to go into executive session.
But Judith, do I have a second? Joan, I need to poll individually for this, so Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?